Of the Mercer Island School District Board of Directors. It's taking place both in person and via Zoom. We have Director Din attending via Zoom and Directors Janine Upton, Lori D'Souza, and myself, Maggie Ty Tucker, attending in person. I am looking for a motion to establish the agenda.
My move is to establish the agenda. Present it.
All in favor of the agenda being established as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nay, no abstentions. That motion passes by a vote of five to zero. The first item on the agenda tonight is recognition of the very generous grant by the Mercer Island Schools Foundation.
So this is always an exciting time of year for us because our fabulous Mercer Island Schools Foundation comes to talk to us about their magnificent fundraising efforts and present what we affectionately call "The Big Check." And so, Andrew, you may need a mic for our executive. Oh, okay. Schools Foundation, I know you're some board members here. Thank you so much for coming in person. And I don't know who's going to speak for you, but if you wouldn't mind coming on up and we'll do a presentation. And then I know we're going to want a photo opportunity here in front of the table as well.
On behalf of the Mercer Island Schools Foundation, we would like to present this check tonight to the Mercer Island School District for $829,715. Thank you so much for the hard work that you do. We're so proud to support you in all the ways that we do. And we hope that you'll spend it all in one place.
Super exciting. And so the board directors here would stand up and they'd come to the front and we'll figure out a great way to do a big picture. You have the big check.
Thank you. Thank you.
Careful with that.
Yeah. There we go. Have everyone a good night.
Okay, one, two, three. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Right, I mean, nobody. We're just going to give everyone a moment to kind of move out of Zoom. We rehearse for that presentation. The next item on our agenda is proclamations for this month. This month is National Bullying Prevention Month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and National Dyslexia Awareness Month.
So as per each month, when there is something that is a nationally recognized month, we acknowledge it at our first board meeting of the month, especially on the national initiatives that really do impact our students and our work with our students. So as you can see on the public content, National Bullying Prevention Month is a nationwide campaign founded in 2006 by the Pacers National Bullying Prevention Center. The campaign is held during the month of October and unites communities and the world to educate and raise awareness of bullying prevention. I'll read the entire thing, but I will acknowledge that we are now inclusive of cyberbullying as part of our education and conversation around National Bullying Prevention Month because that has obviously become another component of, that we need to make sure that we're aware of. This year, UDD Day will be October 20th. Wear and share orange to show unity for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion and to send a visual, visible message that no child should ever experience bullying. For Mark and Calm's, October 20th, the great day to wear beautiful all color orange. October is also National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And this was a joint resolution approved in August of 1945 and has designated every October each year as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. I am super hopeful that our pathways program during National Disability Employment Awareness Month will hopefully move into their new facility on the Northwood campus because those students really are working in the realm of those life skills and being employed. And our teachers do a fabulous job there along with our director, Dr. Udy. So that will be a great celebration, recognition of this October. And then lastly, National Dyslexia Awareness Month. As the board knows, that coming up, they might have to help me up. I think it's this year that dyslexia screener is required by all schools. We have been working on this for many, many years here in Mercer Island School District. And Dyslexia Awareness Month is to seek, it seeks to raise awareness and understanding about dyslexia and the tools to increase better reading skills. We have been, again, working hard on this and training teachers and providing tools, much of which have been supported by our initial Schools Foundation who just left. They have been a great sponsor of our letters, training, and curriculum that is in support of students and dyslexia. So those are the three big recognitions and proclamations and frankly celebrations for October that really are inherent in all the work that we do.
Thank you for that. The next item is public input. And I will be first reading our regular public input statement. This meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a particular issue by accessing the Zoom meeting, please complete the form attached below and submit to the board secretary by emailing the completed form to michellemiller@mercerislandschools.org at least 60 minutes prior to the meeting. If you would like to appear in person, please wear a mask and sign in at the boardroom by entering the administration building in the back door level. When addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern. And if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Our first public input speaker today is Lacey Aker. And I see you there. And the minute you start talking, Lacey, I'm going to hit the timer button. Oh, we've got a timer button built in. Never mind.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Lacey Aker. And I'm here to present and draw your attention to a program I've been involved with during my time at the U.S. Department of Education and the Office of Federal Student Aid. I am just here tonight in my capacity as a resident. So in 2007, President George W. Bush signed into law an act that included the Public Service Loan Forgiveness, or PSLF, program. And it aimed to assist nurses, teachers, police officers, other public servants in paying off the student loan debt that they incurred while earning degrees that would allow them to better serve the public. So to simplify, because of my time constraints tonight, the program allows for federal student loan debt forgiveness for loan borrowers to make 120 qualifying monthly payments while working at least 30 hours a week for a qualified employer. And importantly, this is a different program than the teacher loan forgiveness program, which is, of course, contingent upon a school's Title I status. So the PSLF program has presented borrowers of some bureaucratic and statutory hurdles to debt forgiveness that the current administration has committed to addressing. So a week ago, as I'm sure many of you saw, the Department of Ed announced substantial changes to the program in order to improve access and dismantle these hurdles. So Ed is offering a limited time waiver available until October 31st of next year for borrowers regardless of loan type and repayment status. So NEA estimates that an average educator owes $57,000 in student loan debt. One in seven owes more than $105,000. So this is moving really quickly. It's a really vital program. There's two things that interested borrowers should do right now. One, register for a federal student aid ID. And two, make sure that their studentaid.gov contact information is up to date as Ed starts to roll through and complete their automatic review of previously denied applications. So as we consider the upcoming cuts because of the current budget situation and because, as you know, we have so few opportunities in the public space, in the public sector, to really help employees at zero cost. I think this is a really vital program that the administration should help to gain awareness of for its employees, work with the union on this. If I can do anything to assist in an unofficial capacity, let me know. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Blowett.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for your time. Successful leaders are able to adapt to constantly changing circumstances, redefining their purposes and plans midstream. Shackleton famously set out for Antarctica on a mission of exploration, which quickly transformed into a mission of survival when his ship became icebound. As our school district slowly awakens to its own situation, I urge the board and the administration to exercise the same humility, courage, and optimism that enabled Shackleton and his crew to prevail. We are in the middle of a storm and we are not weathering it well. In the last year alone, we have lost 400 students or almost 10% of enrollment. And we are now projecting a $7 million annual deficit and potential financial insolvency by the end of the school year. Last spring, the circumstances should have been clear when the board convened on April 22nd. Over a year into the pandemic, we had forgotten making any staffing adjustments and had reached, quote, "the point of close monitoring and tight controls over spending," end quote. Moreover, the likelihood of rescue in the form of state funding was quickly fading with our only hopes resting on, quote, "unforeseen additions or inflators that come in later in the year," end quote. Yet despite the many warning signs, Director Gianini, sorry, Upton, moved to minimize the magnitude of the financial distress by brushing aside the annual budget reserve of at least 8%, stating that, quote, "in projecting budgets, there is always the hope that you land the plane on fumes." I am not a pilot. However, I am an attorney who cut his teeth in financial restructuring and advising technology companies on board governance and corporate compliance matters, including public reporting. I do not believe in landing planes on fumes. I believe in facing facts clear-eyed, openly, and with a plan. Last spring, we should have begun preparing for the situation we now find ourselves in. The board should have proactively engaged the administration and directed.
Can I just interrupt to say, can you keep your comments, please, to public input about education in the district? It's not meant as a form for campaigning.
I believe that the financial status of the district is a matter of public importance and not a matter of campaigning.
You've got 45 seconds left.
Just two weeks ago, on September 27th, at a board meeting, instead of finally confronting facts, such as the large number of students who moved off the island and are unlikely to re-enroll soon, Director Upton reverted to his brand of unfounded optimism, stating, "We are an amazing district. I think the numbers will change." I too believe that we are an amazing district, but simply stating something doesn't make it happen. Leadership is asking hard questions and making tough decisions. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. That was it for public input. We have got the next, the student representative board report. We've got both our student representatives here in person.
Okay, hello, everyone. So last Wednesday, we had our first superintendent's and advisory meeting, which was so great to see so many new returning faces from all the schools again, back in person. And we took the time in our meeting to introduce ourselves, perspectives, and we also went over our goals and mission of this year.
We have a pretty action-packed report for you because of, we had all the time to gather perspectives from all of our schools and all of our students. At the elementary schools, some of our students shared that it's difficult staying focused in class, but they're being very appreciative because their teachers are allowing stretch breaks and just breaks for them to get up. Students were also excited to share that student council was also starting up, as well as groups like Green Team and fifth grade bands.
And at West Mercer, they have been having soccer and some other sports tournaments at recess, which has just been a fun opportunity for students to kind of have fun and also get active. And some of our fifth graders did tell us that their teachers are just overall being very empathetic and flexible during the back school process, which was very sweet. So over at IMS, our middle school minister shared that they have appreciated office hours that teachers are providing and they claim these to good use. And some students reported that their teachers have been using very clear systems for posting homework assignment and directions on Schoology. And then one issue that students did have been encountering is navigating the one-way hallways. And some have been a little frustrated having to find alternate routes to get to them classed.
The clubs at the middle school are bringing back a sense of community as schoolwork is picking up. Because of COVID regulations, there are three lunches at the middle school, which some of the students find really tough because they're not able to sit next to their friends and talk to their friends during lunch. At the high school, the past couple of weeks have been hectic and crazy, to say the least. This week is homecoming, which means a lot of events and spirit this week. Tomorrow, we are having a homecoming assembly planned by our ASP, followed by a parade at 5:45. That's going to start in our band block and go all the way to our Islander Stadium. And once everyone's in the stadium at 7:00 p.m., we're going to be having our homecoming game, which is super exciting. And then on Saturday, we're going to have our homecoming celebration at the high school.
Very, very exciting week. Ask for some more kind of in-school updates of the high school. Yesterday, the juniors have the PSAT, which reportedly went very well. Students are also getting back. Andrew said so. Students are also getting back into the rhythm of in-person school and have found counsel at the day table to be very helpful for some of their questions. Some students are saying that they're feeling overwhelmed with the homework, finding that pacing is a little bit inconsistent between teachers. And at our advisory, there's kind of general consensus or general desire for more teacher-to-teacher communication and also teacher-to-student. But finally, later in the month, the MHS orchestrated having its first concert on October 26th. And then All Island Day Night is also coming up on October 29th. So just a lot to look forward to, for sure. But yeah, that is all we have for you. And always, any questions if you guys have any.
No questions. Thank you guys so much. It's great to hear about all the stuff that's going on. Thank you. Next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have three items that we're going to talk to the board about tonight. First up, we are going to again give the board an update on enrollment. And our intent in this is to really clarify information, get the true numbers presented to the public. The slide deck we're going to present will be posted course on board doc and on our website. We received information that social media misinterpreted many of the numbers that were presented at the last meeting. And so we want to make sure that people see the historical context and have some of the definitions that we use. And we're going to kind of triple team this between myself and Fred and Todd so that we can, oh, and we have Giovanna here as well. She is our student information system guru and has pulled much of this data for us as well. So she offered to be here tonight because we kept asking her questions. Well, can you pull us this and can you pull up this data? And she did a human's job and has presented some great data for us to be able to share with you. I would also like to start with some new information that I heard at a statewide superintendent's meeting with Superintendent of State Instruction, Chris Raffo. And in his meeting, he does this every two weeks with superintendents, he talked about the fact that there is an enrollment loss across the entire state. And the estimate from OPI, who collects all the enrollment information, is anywhere from four to five and a half percent enrollment loss across the state. He did talk about his intent to be approaching the legislature in their next session regarding some enrollment stabilization, just as we had last year, as well as continuing moving the prototype of the school model to a space that actually does fund our schools. So those are two pieces I wanted to bring to you as well. It's new information. It's not something we're in alone. When we meet with our colleagues in the region, we hear about their enrollment losses as well. This is something that everyone is dealing with in the state. So just for clarification for everyone, when we talk about FTE, you see them on our monthly enrollment reports. That means full-time equivalent, a full-time student is a 1.0, and that's how we receive funds for them. We also have head count. That's actually how many students. We do have some students back to the FTE who don't attend full-time. This mainly happens at the high school with some students who will do part-time with us and part-time somewhere else. We have a few in elementary, middle school, but it is mainly a function in the high school. Head count, are students enrolled in a school, but not necessarily as a 1.0. So that is a different figure that you see in those enrollment reports. Then there is projected FTE. This is the budgetary component. And when you look at the first report, Ty keeps very close track of this because this is how our dollars flow. And so we always have what have we projected that we have budgeted for? And what are we forecasting for the following year? And then we have the actual, where are we actually at our counts at the beginning of each month? And the October count is really significant because that is the count that is collected by OPI as well. We wanted to give some historical context to remind the board and others who are watching in the public that we have been projecting a declining enrollment prior to the pandemic. So on this slide, you see a chart that is created by Dr. I forgot the first name. Dr. Kendrick, who is a demographer in the region who works with many, many districts. And this was his most recent report that he had done for a part of the pandemic about projections. Ty, would you talk about this slide a little bit?
So Dr. Kendrick usually does an update for us every four years. And he does a 10-year prediction. The reason why we ask him to redo it every four years is because anything beyond four years is essentially a crystal ball that gets really murky. There's just too many things moving, too many things happening outside of that four-year window for any reliability. And so we use Dr. Kendrick's projections mainly for two reasons. One, use it for facility planning because it projects head count. So warm bodies. And two, it's kind of a sanity check for our own internal projections. And prior to pandemic, when everything went sideways, I would do a study where I compared the accuracy of our internal projections against the accuracy of Dr. Kendrick's projections. And we retract incredibly closely to Dr. Kendrick's projections. So it provided us an external reference point in terms of where we were in our accuracy of projections. Now, Dr. Kendrick, when we teamed him in December of 19, we asked him to do an update for our long-reach facility master plan. And as he was looking at the numbers, he confirmed that we are in a projected period of enrollment decline as far out as 25, 2025. At that point, he believed that we would be coming back up because that's the end of the four-year window. And he's projecting the advent of white rail on the island and the assumption that there would be more multifamily housing built on the island to attract more families. So as we're looking at the enrollment, he was projecting a moderate to more steep decline. We always track somewhere between the low and mid-range numbers of his projections. And so even with Dr. Kendrick's projections, we're projecting deep decline. If we move on to the next slide, what I do every year, and this is part of my planning process and looking at the enrollment projections. And this is modified from a slide that's in the guide to the budget. I take a look at his projections and I add the actual enrollment. And then I add the teacher's projected enrollment. And for tonight, I added the October 2021 enrollment count. So the most recent enrollment count, the official count for the year. And you see how in 2021 takes a steep dive and then slightly flattens out. That slightly flattened out point is where we are. That slide, the dotted purple line, is our projections for the year. We brought three scenarios to the board last year discussing either rolling forward enrollment projections at a higher level, a mid-range, where we sometimes would be returning, which at that time was fairly supported by surveys that we've been conducting and the hope that we would be back in person. And then a low range where it was more just a straight projection. We came in below the straight projection. We came in under again, as you mentioned, this is the statewide trend. I was on call with other CFOs at the same time that she was on the call with Superintendent Ringle. And they're also experienced. So this just continues the discussion that we've been having for several years about progressive enrollment decline, but it has accelerated because of the pandemic.
I think it's important to note that the projection is where budget is assumed. And Ty will be back in November with the final for the 2021 school year, where he will then be able to flush out for you what are any fund balances, which then, of course, becomes the beginning fund balance for the 2122 school year. And it's still a month away from that, but my question popped in constantly. And so I did it again today and said, what does it look like? Where do we look like in your, as you're analyzing the budget and we're getting to that final, what does it look like, the 21 any fund balance will look like?
Considerably, we're looking at $4.5 to $5 million, which is about a 7% fund balance.
So this next slide is actual FTE enrollment change. So what we've done here is try to create a comparison for folks to see 2021 school year to the 2122 school year. So the year we're in now. So in June of '21, on our final count, our actual FTE, as you can see it, 3,994.29. I always love fractions for students, but that's not the part-time work. This is not Ed count. Now, here in October of '21, you can see the difference in FTE, 3,934.55. So an FTE change from June to the count now to consider our beginning of the school year count of 59.74. We put a big gray line underneath because we wanted to really differentiate the actual versus the projected. So here you can see the projected for 2122, and this is what Ty was talking about when we projected in the spring, which is you have to have a deadline when you're going to project so you can build your budget, 4,110.8. And again, our actual as of October, we have a little bit from when we talked to you in September because we were still enrolling students. And maybe Giovanna can add some insight to the little bit of a change there. But the actual 3,934.55 for a FTE differential of 176.25 between the projected and the actual. Any questions?
The October date, it's the first Monday in October, right? Is that, that's number of students enrolled, not who are actually present at school, right? Okay, just want to make sure.
So now we're going to take a look at some.
So now we're going to take a look at some, oh, sorry. Just to be super, super, super clear about this. So the F T E change, the actual F T E change there is approximately six, net sixty students. So that could be more students not leaving, but some students coming back. So overall, we're down sixty from June, from what was expected, from what we were expecting for fall, in terms of June. Okay, so the project, the slice that we're kind of missing from that projected F T E is our hypothetical students that we were projecting might join the district or come back to the district, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we wanted to talk a little bit about some historical enrollment trends because this is something that, again, was embedded in Dr. Kendrick's work as well. We always have seniors who that class rolls up. We have a kindergarten class that comes in and they don't always match, but it eventually works through our system and leads to, in this case, not having a larger kindergarten class than the graduation class, the trend of the decline. So we went back to twenty-seventeen, just five years back. You can see our graduation class in twenty-seventeen is three hundred and twenty-one, but yet our incoming kindergarten class was two forty-four, all pre-pandemic. In twenty-eighteen, we graduated another larger class of three hundred and forty-six. And in eighteen-nineteen's school year, we enrolled two hundred and twenty kindergartners. For twenty-nineteen graduation class, a big one, of three hundred and eighty-four, the incoming kindergarten trend again to one hundred and ninety-one. This is still somewhat pre-pandemic because this is now looking at the nineteen-twenty school year. For twenty-twenty, you can see we graduated three hundred and forty-two. And our incoming class was smaller again at one hundred and eighty-one for twenty-twenty-twenty-one. Trend across the nation because of folks, the pandemic, and folks not knowing what school is going to look like for kindergarten. And then for twenty-one, you can see the numbers here, three fifty-five were graduated in twenty and twenty-one. And our incoming class was one of the grades that our projections were on for, two hundred and thirty as of October first. And when you look back, it's in that range of those pre-pandemic years again. So it's starting to feel like at least in the kindergarten pattern, it's moving in that trend again that we had pre-pandemic. Anything to add, Fred or Ty, what I missed? Now we are going to get into some pie charts. And I'm going to turn it over to Fred and Giovanna to talk about this. They broke it up by semesters, and it's really, really important to know that we have Giovanna here because this all comes directly out of our student information system. So when students are enrolled or unenrolled, we gather information from them. And this is the student, this is the information for students who are unenrolled or withdraw. Fred?
Giovanna, if you want to talk a little bit about how the registrars gathered that information, just for background knowledge?
Sure, I can certainly speak to that. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Did I hear somebody?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So our registrars, once they, you know, we have our online enrollment system for families enrolling their students into the district. However, when students withdraw and they contact the schools, the registrars perform a withdrawal function within the Skyward software. They also collect a withdrawal form in, most of the cases, when they can. They get a withdrawal form from the families and hopefully specifying where the student will be going once they leave the school district. All that information, if known, is entered into the Skyward software. So when we were gathering the data here for the presentation tonight, we were looking at the different reasons that students have been leaving the school district. And in this slide that Superintendent Kloski mentioned is the semester one data from last school year. So we were looking at the first day of school of last school year, going through the end of January. And it looks like Fred have, has split this out on a pie chart in terms of what kinds of reasons the majority of the students had for leaving. So and then there are situations where students will leave and they have not specified where they're going. Parents cannot be reached to get that information, so that's where we find that figure of unknown, where the students do not provide a reason for going, for leaving the district, so.
So what we did, thank you, Giovanna. So what we did is we broke it up and we looked at last year in terms of semester one, semester two, and then we also looked at the summer. So as you can see, in the first semester last year, we were remote. And you can see where different students have indicated where they left and went to as part of their withdrawal process. When we get into then the second semester, which is kind of February to June, we have forty-seven students who have withdrawn during that period of time. Again, you can see how the distribution kind of shakes out in terms of where they went to. And then lastly, and this is where the largest number comes in, these are our students who essentially finished out the year and then withdrew over the summer. So these would have been students who withdrew between the end of last year, the last day of school, and then before the first day of school in the current year. And so you can see that we have two hundred and sixty-two students who are reporting in this. And you can kind of see how the different, where the students have gone. The report or the questionnaire that we asked all of these same families that Superintendent Kloski referenced, that's part of what we'll bring for the whole O N nine report. But at least this gives you a precursor to the work that we're doing and finding out where they are. We also do some work around contacting our private schools in and around the region. We're looking for enrollment from students who are in this zip code and trying to take a look at maybe where are some of those schools? So we can look at whether or not they're going to those schools for particular reasons and whether or not those are potential families who may return to us as well. So those are, that's kind of the break, the breakdown there. Oh, last slide then is when you take a look at all the students who left the district last year, now we have a complete composite of what that entire cycle looked like for those students. So you can see a breakdown that, you know, a quarter of our students simply moved out of state. Another nine percent moved out of the country. Another twenty-eight percent went to a new district. And then you can go all the way around with private schools then being the next largest there.
Fred, it got out of order. Would you mind going back to slide seven, I think it is?
It should be slide seven, and for some reason it is off of mine.
It disappeared, but it's now.
Is it back?
So this slide has its title, and we had a lot of conversation about it. And we're, it was a lot of work on Giovanna's part to really work through this data. So thank you, Giovanna, in public. But this slide is that historical enrollment trend again, which is based on head count, so not F T E. And it's new students who enrolled during the school year. And then at the bottom, we'll talk about the students who withdrew. So we went back to eighteen-nineteen. Giovanna was able to go back to that year. And you can see the numbers. What we did do, because it's the do you count the kindergartners or not? Well, not really, because they're a whole class. So you can see in eighteen-nineteen, new students, six thirty-five. Subtracted the twenty-two kindergartners, it's four hundred and fifteen new students. In twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, five hundred and forty-six. Subtracted the one hundred and ninety-one kindergartners, three hundred and fifty-five students without kindergarten. Twenty-twenty-twenty-one, five hundred. That low number of one hundred and eighty-one kindergartners. New students enrolled, that comes out to be three hundred and nineteen. And then twenty-one-twenty-two, five hundred and fifty-seven, three twenty-seven without the kindergartners. We did the same for students who withdrew during the school years by using this senior class because of course they always draw as they move on in their next phase. So in eighteen-nineteen, six hundred and sixty-two, it was two hundred and seventy-eight without the seniors. They'd seen that year. Nineteen-twenty, seven hundred and nine withdrawal, three sixty-seven without the seniors. Twenty-twenty-one, as we know, bigger number, seven hundred and sixty-four, but there were three hundred and fifty-five seniors. So four hundred and nine without the seniors. But there were also three hundred and twenty-seven who enrolled in that year. Twenty-twenty-one is to be determined, but this was something that we felt was important for everyone to see the trends in. Anyone have anything to add to this one? I know there was some insight as we were looking.
I think the one here that we kind of looked into was, you know, what was the impact of the period of time for the pandemic? So if you take the nineteen-twenty, I'm on the top part of the chart here. So if you take the nineteen-twenty students without the kindergartners who enroll, we have three hundred and fifty-five students. And then if you take last year, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we have three hundred and nineteen students. When we add that together, we get six seventy-four. So then we were curious, with the number of students who left in those same two years, when you add the three sixty-seven and the four oh nine, you get seven hundred and seventy-six. So when you subtract the seven hundred and seventy-six students who withdrew, offset by the six hundred and seventy-four who entered, it's a hundred and two student loss in terms of head count. A little bit, what's not included in there, of course, is the F T E. And we know that some students may have returned to us, but maybe they only returned to us as a partial enrollment. And so we have to be careful that we don't put too much stock into this as a head count. F T E is really where the budget comes from. But we were really curious as to, you know, what was the complete change? So the two deltas that seem to be driving our reduced enrollment are these students that we lost during the pandemic. Those hundred and two students, plus the fact that our kindergarten numbers continue to lag behind our graduating seniors, which is a historical trend that we've seen. We're fortunate this year, two hundred and thirty kindergartners came back to us. If they didn't come back to us, I guess they can't do us. We saw a similar increase in our first grade. So those kindergartners who may have chosen not to enroll last year during remote learning did come. So it's really those second graders through our twelfth graders. You know, that's really where the, where the loss was there. And I think that's where we need to start looking at, how do we attract families back? But then also, how do we continue to push to maintain enrollment in kindergarten? And so we'll be working with MIPA, we'll be working with the other groups to start talking about early enrollment for the years ahead.
And just a reminder to the board again, this comes from Skyward. Yes, there is a survey that is sent to those who withdraw, and that information is disseminated out and presented to the board in the monitoring report in December. So that gets into a little bit more information if people have responded. Again, any survey is only as good as the data that you're able to collect. And even in our Skyward system, as Giovanna pointed out, sometimes it's unknown because there's just no response. So kind of to summarize, yes, our enrollment impacts our budget. However, Ty and I both want to assure the board that we will not be insolvent at the end of this school year, the twenty-one-twenty-two school year, that yes, as we've been doing frankly since eighteen-nineteen, we've been talking to the board about, we have to be making reductions in our budget. And when we did a four-year plan pre-pandemic, we talked directly to the board about, over the years. So we do always have to look at our staffing and are we in the right space for our class size? And making those adjustments each year based on our projections. So next year, I think that the conservative side of Ty when it comes to numbers, which is what we want to have, we see both, will be looking at much, much more of yes, we've got any fund balance that was better than we had hoped for in the fall. But yet we still have to be looking forward to twenty-two, twenty-three, and what is enrollment going to do? Pandemic definitely threw their parts up in the air and everyone's still trying to grasp them and catch them and figure out how we move forward. I think even across the state, as I mentioned earlier, they're looking at this enrollment loss for all districts that we're going to pack those, we have for everyone. So more to come and definitely some advocacy work for our board directors as we approach the next legislative session. So any questions on the enrollment report?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I really appreciate this more breakdown, the clarity where our enrollment is at. And Fred, I really like how you said that, how do we attract students back? Because one of the biggest thing I get from this presentation is that, you know, although across the state, and I think across the U S, you know, projection, enrollment numbers are down. And that there are things that we can't control. But then, so, you know, then we have to focus on more what we can control, which is student retention, right? And even though we may be somewhat consistent with percentage, and I think we're a little bit higher, but we're such a small school district that any kind of decrease in enrollment, I feel, have a larger impact on us. So I like that we are keeping that mindset of asking, you know, how do we continue to attract students back? And I really appreciate the historical slide trend, trend slide in that it just made me think about, there might be different reasons that kindergartners, you know, are coming in or not versus seniors. So that at our all-grade levels, there are different reasons why people choose to enroll or not. So I think that's something that we should really look at. And I also appreciate, you know, and I know that the administration has always been very good. And I feel like the board has been responsive as well to making sure that our budget, you know, that we are physically accountable. But I also would ask that we not just look to see if we're right-sized for our classroom, but when we look at this, are we right-sized for the whole district? And that we really look at everything as we're making these, making sure that our budget reflects the current reality of our student enrollment. So thank you for all these extra data.
And just to point out, Director Dinn, you may recall last year when we brought reductions to the board, it did reflect across the district, there were reductions in just about all areas. And we were able to restore particularly ones that directly impacted students. So yes, we will continue to work with our labor partners as well as the board in any time that we're having to make reductions.
Thank you for this, putting things in context and perspective is great. You know, every couple of years, I think it happens in every field, but maybe even every year. There's always the sky is falling, the sky is falling. We had it with the Lovey clip, you know, I don't even know if the ones were before that because I wasn't as involved. But I know that it's all the time. And I appreciate the constant updates so that we can react in our cost guard. Because I think that's the most important thing, is that we're able to plan as best as we can. I, and then another, and then I have an observation, and in no way am I advocating for open enrollment. This is just an observation that my memory is that we had open enrollment until around the class of twenty-twenty in kindergarten, it was right around there. My nephew graduating twenty-twenty, I know he had it, and then I know that it wasn't there when my daughter started. So somewhere around there, and those seem to be the larger graduating classes. And those seem to be the larger graduating classes. So I'm just wondering, and this is not directed from the board. I'm curious to know what frankly, the benefits of the open enrollment at that point in time. I know that it was done, or at least one of the main reasons was done was to increase enrollment at a time of decline and to fill up our classrooms. So we didn't lose staff, which is always the hugest benefit of open enrollment. And I would just love to see more information and on those trends. And I know we don't have to make any decisions now, so nothing tomorrow. And I'm not directing anything unless the rest of the board directors are looking for it. But I just noticed that the largest classes that we have before the drop-off were those open enrollment classes, or at least the end of it. I don't know how long that happened for. So I just think that will be really good information to have once we are making those decisions. Because I think it is something that we're going to have to be looking at. And so having that data when we're making those is going to be helpful for me.
I was just going to ask first whether other board members are also interested in seeing data on open enrollment. Brian, it looks like a shrug. Yes, no?
I'm just suggesting when we have, when we start having those discussions, I'm not suggesting that.
Not anything important.
No. We don't actually do anything with that policy until we have to make an announcement by April April fifteenth, I believe, if anything, it sounds like. But the policy also states the district has been closed to new non-resident student enrollment commencing with the two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year.
So that was the that so I arrived in oh nine.
Right.
And it was on the heels. That was the last year was right before I had arrived. So the recession we're right in the throes of the recession. And that's the last time the district hovered back down around four thousand students or just dipping below right where we are now. So just, I was looking at some charts, kind of looking at that. So just historically, that's kind of what was happening in the district at that time.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, once we opened enrollment and allowed kids to enter, we were committed to them until they graduated. So that never really grew any graduating class except the two thousand nine rule. And really, I remember doing the bond. This was a big deal. There was a lot of concern around open enrollment. And how they would not, those were not the students who represented voters on the island and things like that. So there was a very large concern that overcapacity that the community was paying for was due to open enrollment students. And we were able to show at that time that it was not due to, due to open enrollment students.
And kind of to Director Dinn's point, but it kind of loops back is our kindergarten numbers, as you saw, historically trail our seniors. Because of course, we attract new families in and we're a district that doesn't see a lot of attrition out. Because families tend to move here and they're making a move to the long haul. They want to be here for the community. They want to be here for the schools. And so we grow students over the years. But that was, you know, I think that long range. So what he's planning as well as the bond committees, I'd also look at that as well to see where it is along the way. But it would, you know, as we start looking for that super demographic, I know we can dust off some of the archives on that one and bring it up.
I think the other interesting one we have to look at, I really appreciate this data. This data is nice. And we haven't really looked at it before this way. So I think there's a new opportunity here for us to think about this as a metric over the long term. And I love the analysis you did where you subtract out the kindergarteners. There's a whole different set of reasons for why those children come in and you subtract out the seniors. Because that's another reason. So there's a very well-defined reason why they're leaving. So I love the analysis you did on the withdrawals that are happening, I think, kind of in the center. And I think there's a lot more understanding and detail that we can go into as to why that's happening. And I think both as a board and as an administration of the long term, that'll be good. The increasing number of withdrawals in that area, which now represents an increasing percentage as our district is shrinking, seems a little problematic. But as you point out, this is a the birth rates are decreasing over time in King County. It's decreasing in Washington State and it's decreasing nationally. Some understanding of that kind of has to go in too. Job flexibility has increased substantially. So there's a lot going on here. It's hard to say any one issue around this. But I think you you've really uncovered a real gem of analysis that we can do that will help us make our schools function better.
I found it all was very helpful. Well, Brian, if you would like to.
I was going to mention too, as we were kind of talking around budgets and how that plays into all of this. We've been through a series of really significant changes in our district over the past five years. So there was the levy cliff, which we were kind of rescued from, that had to do with our local levies and the change in that, that there was some clearing, which was a major shift. And during that entire time, we opened a fourth elementary school, part of that bond. So I was at West Mercer Elementary School as a parent there. And we had, when my daughter came into kindergarten, we're over seven hundred students at West Mercer Elementary School. So our schools were incredibly crowded. And then there was this major shift. And I remember that huge change at West Mercer as hundreds of students moved over to Northwood and several hundred students moved into West Mercer because everything kind of shifted across the island. But we knew at the time that the bond was passed for the board of elementary school that this district and our community wanted smaller schools, elementary schools. They made a choice to open a fourth elementary school so that we could be around four hundred to five hundred students in an elementary school. But that came with a huge annual cost, an increase in our budget. Because it costs more money to run an entire building. You need your facility administration, you need maintenance for that, you need to be able to light it, you need to heat it, all of those costs. And at the time, I think it was about two and a half million dollars a year that it that was going to increase that cost at that level. So this was a commitment that the community made in order to open that. And it's a commitment that we're going to continue to move through. We have to realize that those costs are embedded in what we're facing right now. And as we begin to decline, we begin to get close to that four thousand, dip under that four thousand mark again, our schools will get very, very comfortable in elementary schools for a while, but that trend is going to reverse. The birth rates are going to reverse, the schools are going to fill up again. And we're going to be again back at kid net ceiling, the schools with five hundred kids in those elementary schools. And so I think it's important to remember that this was part of the vision and the long-term values of our community in opening a fourth elementary school, that it came with a hefty annual cost. And that we didn't get any additional money in apportionment from the state by opening a fourth elementary school. We didn't get anything extra for that, except for the cost and the peace of mind of our students. Our staff didn't change for the most part, the teachers just moved the students in building. But there were other costs involved with that. So I think it's really important that we keep that in mind as well. Because now we're on the backside of that choice and it'd be really comfortable to doubt that now, but I think it was the right choice for the community.
Deborah, did you have one more thing to say?
I just wanted to reiterate that I just thought that data was helpful and in no way advocating anything at this point because I get misquoted all the time. But I know that it's going to be a consideration. And what I do find fascinating is that was the last time during the crisis of the time of the recession. I do remember that now. And, you know, we're facing a different one now, but with the same impact. So that's just in terms of looking at trends, which is very interesting.
Do you want to move on to the second area? Two more items. I think one should be short, the other will be a bit lengthy. Giovanna, thank you so much for being here tonight to give us this information. I will excuse you, but I think we need to bring in Learning Services Director Jamie Prescott. And Jamie, and along with Fred, are going to give you an update on our highly capable program, specifically at the elementary. But again, as we get ready to roll this out with you, again, I want to correct some misinformation that unfortunately spread either by social media or just the usual gossip channels of things like we are doing away with highly capable services. No, we are not. We are changing our model. We are still providing the services. We are still assessing students. We do not have less advanced placement to classes at the high school than previously, although sometimes those are based on who chooses them and whether they're able to be fully implemented. But when we were talking about this earlier, several of us said, wow, we just saw that someone, you know, again, is posting, oh, there's, there's no more AP classes. Yes, there are. And there are also honors classes as well. So do want to make sure that everyone understands when we talk about services versus programs, it really does expand to be able to serve more students rather than only a few. So now I'm going to turn it over to Fred and Jamie, and I always love Jamie's PowerPoint because they have an artistic flair to them as well. Welcome, Jamie. Good to see you.
Hello, good evening.
You know, one of the things that we continue to do as a learning organization is, you know, engage in the continuous quality improvement cycle. So we're constantly planning, we're doing, we're acting, or we're studying, and then we're changing course. And so as we move along, we feel like it's important to continue to come back to you. Anytime we're making shifts, early night, we'd like to bring back information so that you can see the work that's happening and what was the result of some of the things that we planned and then what are we doing as we're moving forward? And so Jamie and I just wanted to come before you tonight, just a few slides. It's also a precursor to the next board meeting where you will see the highly capable annual state grant that is part of the approval process. So rather than spending an entire session on that, we wanted to front load you with information so that you're aware of what we're up to for that. So with that, Jamie, you want to start off?
Sure. So just as a brief background, I know we've covered this in in different meetings and different contexts, but in order, as we kick off this year, just a reminder, like, why do we even have a high cap advisory? Why are we looking at any changes, both in the identification process or the service delivery model? And it really stems from a twenty seventeen, eighteen review of the program. At the time, it was both a special education review and a high cap review. And there were staff, students, and parents who were part of focus groups and surveys. And that input was then collated and two recommendations really emerged as high priorities. One was to revise our identification process because it was determined that we were over identifying students. And two was to consider a new service delivery model, whether that be school-wide enrichment or something else that that was proposed to us as an area of need for us. So we put together the high cap advisory and it's comprised of teachers, parents, coaches, instructional coaches, and building and district administrators. And that group has had twelve meetings over the course of the last few years. And it's actually twelve plus because we have some subgroup meetings at times, just really trying to get authentic feedback from different stakeholders versus an entire group. Some of the professional learning that we've embarked on as a part of this work has been our partnership with inclusive schools, with Novak Education. We have an inclusion coach. Last year, it was Julie Newcomer. And this year, we are excited that we have Chris Coughlin Ray, who was a longtime teacher in the district. She formerly was a highly capable teacher and a wonderful gen ed teacher. And we've got, we've had multiple workshops for teachers, including waytag and gifted ed specific trainings offered for staff. And then our focus on universal design for learning, so really trying to make learning accessible to all students and being able to scale up or scale down depending on a student's need. Last spring, if you recall, we revised the identification process. And initially, we were going to have it be a free, free test, three-pronged process. And we ended up turning it into two phases. So there was phase one, which was the COGAT, the cognitive abilities test, and the Torrance test for creative thinking. And after that, multi-disciplinary committee then gathered additional student data. They reviewed the scores and percentiles for each student. They looked at their other data. They looked at report cards, any, any data that we had in our student information system and made a recommendation for students to move to phase two. And then in phase two, students took the Iowa assessments and previously a student had to qualify in both reading and math. And this past year, we added science. And so a student only needed to qualify in two out of three. So if a student was had a proclivity for math and science, they were no longer excluded based on a reading score. Or if if science and reading were strong, they didn't have to have the math component, really trying to broaden how students were able to to qualify.
One of the things that we've been asked is, you know, as we're looking at changes and can the, you know, the evolution of this, what has it been like historically? And so kind of wanted to put together just a quick look for the board tonight, just to kind of see prior to two thousand and eleven, and that was even before there was real pressure and push to have universal screeners. But we were doing that. We were using lots of different measures. We were using reading inventories. We were using the COGAT. We were using the easy curriculum-based measurement. We're using the ITBS. We were using WASSL scores and then morphed into MSP scores, which are now SBA scores. And so we had lots of iterations. And even in the time when I arrived in two thousand nine to the two thousand and eleven, we were changing it every year, trying to find the right way to identify students and and see where we were. In two thousand and eleven, we decided to move to a universal COGAT screener. And that's really what we used to be able to identify students. And that led to what I don't, what I think I've spoken to you before, but just as a reminder, to an incredible inequity between gender. We were identifying two to two and a half times more, more boys than girls at the time. And so we took a look and said, you know, we can't, you know, we're inherently using a system that's creating discrepancies. So then we transitioned to the LOMAN and RINZOOB matrix in two thousand and thirteen. And that was the COGAT and ITBS kind of put together. Then we moved into two thousand and twenty-one, and that's where we were applying the review recommendations based on the guidance from the committee. And that's what Jamie had just described. And so Jamie, want to talk about, you know, lessons learned from that process and where we're headed for two thousand and twenty-two based on improvements and refining the process?
Sure. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, we, we, this year, the advisory came back after we had presented that we were going to do all three assessments before making a determination. There was really a desire to move forward, the cognitive thinking, the aptitude and the creative thinking, because our students do perform really well academically on the whole. So we trend higher than the state and and nationally. And so we went with the two-phase process. And like I said, we added the science. Upon reflection, we, we wish we had done all three assessments at one time. And so for this year, for our universal testing for second graders, we will be using all three assessments. So it does mean a little more time out of class and instructional time. But we're hoping then that we can get a full picture of every student and have all of the data in front of us at once before the multi-disciplinary committee begins to review student profiles.
And Jamie and I were just on a call today with a practitioner who is a former, she's now retired and just does consulting. And she basically does preconsulting because she just wants to continue to give back to the profession. But she was at the University of Connecticut in their gift education. She's been also on the faculty at Whitworth on the other side of the state, speaks a lot of rate time. And so we had a great conversation with her and she's helping us think through some things as well.
So I wanted to share with you some longitudinal data. We only went back a few years. I can go back as long as you would like that we could find the data for. But you hear the, you know, oh, my gosh, you've cut high cap in half. You've done this and that and the other. And I really just wanted to show this last year, we tested fewer students than we have tested in previous years. Consequently, we would have, as far as whole numbers, we would have fewer students qualify. So if you look at the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Jamie, let's interrupt really quickly. We tested fewer because we had a number of families who Really quickly, we tested fewer because we had a number of families who opted out this year and chose not to go with the testing, whether or not that was because of the remote learning and 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 whatnot. But they certainly will have a chance to test again in the next period. But we still offer universal testing to all of our second graders.
Absolutely. And and the the biggest drop or shift is from students whose families or teachers nominate. So off-grade level, we universally test at grade two, but for grades three through 11, parents or teachers can nominate students for testing. And that's where you'll see the biggest jump or drop, I guess. And so in 1920, we had 292 second graders were tested. Of of those 292, 45 students qualified, which was 15.4%. So this is two years following the recommendation from the outside review that said we were over identifying students. And I want to say at that point in time, and I don't have the number in front of me, but I think we were at like 16%. And so in this year, we identified 15.4% of second graders to receive high cap services. And then in that same year, 181 students tested off-grade and 19 of them qualified, so 10.5%. Last year, or 2020, 2021. So this was testing that occurred in the spring of 2019 and or winter of 2019, spring of 2020 and summer of 2020 for the 2020, 2021 school year. We tested 314 second graders of that number, 51 of the 51 qualified to receive services, which is 16.2% for kids who are off the universal grade levels. We tested 138 students with 19 qualifying, and that's 13.8%. When we look at this year, so this is testing that occurred last spring, over the summer, this August and September, we tested 251 second graders. So again, there's a, there's a drop here from a year prior. And we qualify, 28 students have qualified. There's an asterisk there because we still have new students who are in the evaluation process. We're waiting for the return of the Torrance test results. So this number may change because we do have students who have met the initial criteria of of COGAT. They, we had them test on the Iowa anyways, so that we didn't have to delay any further. So that once we get the Torrance results back, we'll be able to send that to our MDC, and then they'll be able to make a determination for possible movement at the trimester for students. So that number may increase a little bit. Same with the number down here of students who are off-grade level. So 63 tested and nine qualified, which equates to 14.3%.
Jamie, can I interrupt with a question?
Sure.
I was surprised. I'm surprised to look at this and to see that that you're still testing kids as high as 11th grade. What does that look like for, say, a 10th or 11th grader if they get through this screening process?
So I will say, we haven't had a high school age student test in the last three years. The last one we had was a freshman, and it was my first year in this role. And it, they really don't test because everything is open access at high school. And so the testing would give them the little indicator in their profile. And in Skyward, to say that they were receiving highly capable services, they would get an extra pass from their counselors to make sure that they were enrolled in rigorous enough courses. But other than that, there are no high cap specific courses at the high school. Anybody can choose to take an honors class or an AP class. And so once I explain that to students, because there have been some who have opted in to register. And when I reach out to them and explain, you know, you're welcome to go through with this testing. Here's what the benefit will be. But then I explained that they, they can take any course they want. They're like, oh, forget the testing. I'm going to just enroll in what I want to enroll in.
Thank you so much.
So we are really excited. One of the things that we talked about last year in the spring, and as we did updates to you, was this notion of professional learning and really for all of our educators. We have, we partnered with the inclusive schools. So we had a Circle, Circle Makers Summer Academy open to all teachers. Those resources, worse, resources still exist. We have access to them. They also provided a leadership institute. So building and district leaders participated. They were our keynote speakers for our August 26 kickoff day. When we ran, it's called Instructional Technology Day, and that's a day of training for staff. And there was a UDL lens to everything we were trying to do. And so as different teachers and staff members were building courses, they were trying to incorporate UDL practices and a UDL lens into what they were doing and bridging technology with that. We have partnered with Katie Novak and Novak Education. Our instructional coaches meet with her once a month in planning professional learning and development for each site and for the district. Last week, to last week, one of her partners presented to all K5 staff. And then they're going to be presenting at IMS coming January.
And continue, Jamie, you're gone frozen.
Am I, am I frozen?
Yeah, you're not.
Okay, sorry. And then we also have quite a few staff who have enrolled. So Novak Education came out with a series of micro courses, really targeting UDL, UDL and a general education classroom, crosswalks between special services and gen ed, looking at rigor. And so we've got a number of stu, of staff who have enrolled in the micro courses, which is really exciting. So they're pursuing this learning outside of something that we provide in a given workday. So that's very cool. We had people attend the Way Tag Annual Conference. So that's the Washington Association of Educators for the Talented and Gifted. And we sent our inclusion coach to that as well. So she's been bringing back ideas and things to share with staff. And we've developed, she's developed a website specifically for our K5 staff, full of professional learning opportunities. There are videos, there are templates, there are articles. She really took a UDL approach to the design of it. And we're, right now, we're in the process of also making a public-facing site for parents so that you can see what it is that we are working on, what our teachers and staff are learning, and see some of the the research and things behind the things we're doing. Our instructional coaches, like I said, are doing a lot of professional development, both in a one-to-one setting and in small groups and as a whole staff. So this coming week, they are presenting on the 20th. They're doing, taking some of what they learned from Katie Novak in their meeting with her and presenting that and providing opportunities for staff. And then we also have book studies through our connection with the CCS. And there are new books this year specifically on UDL. So we're excited to get those rolling.
Real quick question?
Yeah.
On the micro courses, were they unique, new micro courses around high cap students? And could we make, make them available to parents and or board members to to look at? I remember going to the site and previously not seeing any courses targeted towards high cap. So that's, that's great that they, they have that.
So they're not specific to high cap. They are specific to like teaching for equity. And I can pull up, I don't, I don't want to misquote it. So I can pull it up and I can put the link in the chat, or I can send it out to you so that you can see what the courses are. There's like six different ones.
A lot of the work that are in, that our inclusion coach is doing though, is she's taking these different components. She's the one that's actually building the components for extensions for rigor for those. So she's the one that's actually building the backend for our staff on there. And like, like Jamie said, we're going to have an outward facing one for parents as well. That will, that will be included. So there's a lot, a lot of the work in this space is covering the spectrum of students, not one. So we're doing that work on our own.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I think it would help people to get a better flavor of what it looks like to be able to see some of the courses. Yeah.
So while Fred was speaking, Director Duzza, I pulled up the site. So the micro courses that staff are registered for, some are in the Intro to UDL. Some are in the How SEL and UDL Intersect. There is Building Bridges Between Gen Ed and Special Ed. There's Universally Designing Professional Learning Communities. And then there's Standards-Based Grading for All, Equity by Design, and UDL for Remote Learning.
Thank you.
Okay, should we move on to this one? So we are excited to be providing all K5 staff with new information on how to serve students, giving them more data than they've had before, and more detailed analysis of that data. This was our intent all along, as we were talking about being able to serve more students. And so I think we'll come back around to this as we continue talking about best ways to serve students. But one of the things that we are working on it, and so I'm going to go through each of these just to talk a little bit about how it's new and and what impact it has for classroom teachers. So Fred, if you click on the five areas of giftedness and motivation. So this is a document where we've got the descriptions based on the gifted rating scale of the five different areas of giftedness. And really, what that, what does that look like? What does that mean for a student? So what does it refer to? And then underneath it, if you scroll down, there are examples. So what does it mean? What does this look like in a classroom, right? If for academic, it would, it includes sometimes compacted material. Sometimes there's alternate supplementary materials like we use in high, like in our high cap designated classrooms, trying to open up those supplementary materials so that any student who scores very highly in math or quantitative has access to those, not just those students who qualified in all areas to get into the high cap program. We've got William and Mary and Jacob's ladder, again, resources and curriculum that are used to supplement in our high cap classrooms. And then as you keep going down, you'll just see that there, we do this for each of them. And I, this is linked here, so you could review it whenever. But this is on now our K5 educator PD page for teachers to be able to say, okay, if I get information that I've got a student who who scores really highly in creativity, then you know, what, what does that even mean? How do I do that? Because what it does not mean is they're really good at drawing or they like to do art projects. It's very, very different. And so really trying to put in their hands what things look like and how you might address them for, for a student. Sorry. Sorry. And then so there's the five areas of giftedness that are rated using the gifted rating scale. But then there's also a, this motivation piece and also called grit. So it's not a measure of or an index of giftedness, but it really is important to understand because motivation and task commitment are grown in students. That's something that we teach them based on the opportunities we provide. And so just giving a notion, just because a student is not highly motivated, does not mean that they are not gifted and talented. And the opposite is true. So this is one piece that we're giving in, and Chris Cochrane Ray is continuing to build out. What does this look like in a classroom? How might I implement this or address this need of a student? And so she's putting together examples and things, and we'll continue to build that out for staff. Then we are, we are now going to be entering really detailed information from the COGAT assessments so that teachers can see detailed student profiles. So previously, a teacher could look at the student data dashboard, and they could see that a student scored in the 88th percentile in reading, the 94th percentile in math. And that's what they got. So it gave them a quick indicator like, okay, they're above average. But that was it, not really anything to promote how to reach that student's needs, how to differentiate their instruction to meet those needs, et cetera. And so now in homeroom, teachers are going to be able to see a student's ability profile. And in that ability, it identifies the stain line. Then it identifies whether like an A would be a student who is pretty consistent across the board. And so there's A, B, C, D, different profiles. And then there are like pluses and minuses. So if a student is high in verbal, then they would have a V plus. And if they were significantly lower in quantitative than they were in verbal, then there's a Q minus. And what it does then is produces, you can take this number and on the website, they do an excellent job. They've, they've updated their system to really provide detailed information that could be accessed by parents or staff. But to talk about what does this mean for the student? What does the student strengths look like? What are some instructional strategies that would be good to implement for this student? And so providing this for teachers on every single student who takes the assessment then gives them additional tools and ways to connect to students that brings conversations they can have with instructional coaches to say, okay, so here, here's the list of my students and their different profiles. I'm able to group them. And, you know, help me design a unit or a lesson where I can meet all of their needs. And I'm already looking and we can provide them with like ability groupings. So we're excited about that, but that's up and coming. You can go back, Fred. And then, nope. And then click on the detailed Iowa profile. Similarly, we have not provided teachers with these reports previously. But this is taking, so the last one we looked at was COGAT. This is the Iowa assessment. So this is reading, math, and science. And this gives a detailed breakdown by strand, much like the data we have for the SBA. We don't have SBA data for the last few years. So we're really working with what, what is available. But being able to see by strand where a student is excelling, where they've got a gap from the national. So like, if you look at this student here, you know, it, key ideas, they're, they're very strong in the key ideas. But an area where they're going to need some focus is on author's craft and understanding what that means. So providing this information to teachers on every student who again took the assessment gives some additional knowledge and they can begin to scaffold. And instead of having to figure out what that student's strengths or weaknesses are or needs for scaffolding, they've got a starting point and a launching point for each kiddo. It also helps with, again, I said this with grouping, being able to say, okay, well, these three students are all having a challenge identifying author's craft. So I'm going to group them together here. And these four students are really excelling in understanding key concepts. So I'm going to group them here. And we're going to have some different activities that specifically target the Common Core standards in those given strands. And then finally, is the detailed creative thinking profile. So with the new Torrance assessment, parents received these reports, but giving them to teachers to be able to have them look and see where, in what areas did a student excel? And where might they need additional support or opportunities to learn something or try and grow in an area? So again, presenting information to them to be able to set, to help them with grouping, to help them with planning, et cetera. So we're excited as we continue this work and we're hoping to get more information into teachers' hands to, so that they feel that they know their students as soon as they walk in the door. And that's really our intent and be able to, to group students and plan for them with as much information as possible. And finally, this is a tentative timeline for this year for high cap.
I just want to say, I thought all that information you have on students and finding it to the teachers like that is simply amazing. That'll go a long way towards understanding the classroom and understanding the different groups of students teachers have. So I'm, I, I think I'm just so thrilled. I've been wondering about this for so long. So I'll, I'll just say, I've, I've been like smiling behind my mask here. Ready to scream and grieve, but it's, it makes such a huge difference. I know it could be overwhelming for some people to get used to, and I appreciate it. I'll take, take some time at first. But I am thrilled. I'm curious, is this like on an iPad or is this a file? And how do parents get to, get to see it?
Do you mean for, like, for their individual student?
Yeah, for their individual. Well, there's kind of two things. One is the teacher seeing the whole group is on an iPad. They could just quickly reference it. And then on a website, can the teacher, can the parents see it for their kid?
So we are building it in homeroom, which is our student data database. So that's where we house all the scores, and that's where we load benchmark data and SBA data. And we've got risk indicators. We have so many things that teachers can filter by. And so we are building it so that a teacher can filter and say, okay, I need to know where, how each of my students did in this area. I'm planning for a reading unit, and I'm looking at fluency, and I want to know how my kiddos did. And so they can filter by that and then say, okay, great. These are kids. These are kids I'm going to need some extra scaffolding for. These are kids where, who are really ready for a depth of knowledge beyond those of their peers. Here's how I'm going to plan for that. And so we're building that in, in homeroom. And so it's not a parental tool, like parents don't access homeroom, teachers do. But we can run reports and things out of there to provide to parents. So that would be a potential option. The COGAT profiles, the Iowa profiles and the creative thinking profiles are all available and that might be something we start to do. So parents receive the detailed TTCT profile when, with this last round of testing this past year. We haven't sent the, the detailed COGAT profiles, although parents do have access to it because it prints at the bottom of the student's report and they can go to a website and then see all the information. And then the Iowa, we can, we can print that for them from now on, like we've kept it very simple in the past. But in an effort to try to provide more information about specifics on what students need, what their strengths are and where their areas of growth are, we can absolutely begin to, to send these reports to parents with the determination letters.
Thank you. That's very cool.
And then as far as a High Cap timeline, you'll see tonight is the update to you. And then really, we're going to, like I said very early in this slide deck, Chris Cocklin Ray, the elementary instructional coaches, Nova Williams, they are all working to take what is currently a staff centered professional learning website and make it so that there are parent opportunities to, to learn, engage, see the research, see and understand the data. And so we're working on that and we're planning to launch that on November 1st. So that, and then we'll continue to add to it as it develops. On November 8th is the first High Cap advisory meeting of the year. We'll share the data from this past year's qualifiers and non-qualifiers. We'll share that we are going back and we are going to do all three assessments for our universal screening and clarify qualification criteria. We are considering going back to using a matrix, whether that's the Loman and Ranzilli, or if we look at some others in meeting with the professor we met with today. She gave us a couple of ideas of places to look and, and based on what we're doing. And so we'll be going through that and then we're going to engage the community and students and staff in a thought exchange process. And in doing so, it's to gather input. One of the, the pieces of feedback was, you know, you need to hear from more of us, right? Because we hear from people who are really passionate for or against something. But we don't necessarily hear the whole, right? And what, you know, what, what are different people thinking? And so we want to really engage the community and staff and students to say, yes, we had this review in 1718, here is what we learned from, from that information. And now that it's 2021, let's think about and get feedback from where you're feeling now. And so we're going to engage in a thought exchange process and then we're going to hold a series of forums, not webinars, not like one directional, here, I'm going to give it to you and tell you what we're doing. But really an opportunity to hear from parents, from staff and from students as to, you know, what, what do we need to be considering? And what aren't we thinking of? And what is it that, that you feel that, that you need that we're not providing? And so I'm excited to have those opportunities to really engage with different stakeholder groups. And so you can keep scrolling down. It just talks about the different meetings, different updates that we, I intend to bring to you so that you can see the dates and when you know that you're going to be receiving updates and information.
I think one of the things that struck me today in our conversation with this practitioner was, she was, she was really saying, you know, over the past 10 years, our state has really gotten, and it's really a cross nation, but she was really speaking about her state that we've gotten very mired in this whole idea of High Cap and giftedness. And she said, you might be better off focusing more on talents and thinking about what are all the talents of the students? And then think about those services that you're providing them and where they can be provided and whatnot. And I think that in home for me, because it reminds me that students have many talents and they're talented in different areas. And some of those might be mathematics and we have to continue to meet their needs, just like someone whose talents might be more in leadership. And I know we've even talked about that as part of a fundamental over the years. So I don't know, Jamie, I was reflecting on that prior to tonight, that kind of stuff. So with that, we really just wanted to do, give you an update, a transparent update of what we've been up to and what the teams are working on and how we're trying to continue to meet the needs of all students and do it in a way that provides more opportunities for students, not less. Maintain the quality education we have. And as you can see, when we did slow things down last year, we maintained some things and we pushed a lot of things forward too. And it's a really exciting time.
Cam, I see your hands up.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. You know, I think at these board meetings, it's, you know, as an educator, I am supportive of this. And, but I feel like a lot of my value is in pulling out things that, you know, how can we make it better? How it could be help in facilitating the implementation of our really the vision that we're going for. And so I have a couple of questions, Jamie, and you don't have to answer them all. Maybe you just make note and whatever you can answer today, answer. But it just, you know, as you were talking, I mean, so I really appreciate the how you like learning services is willing to do continuous learning and continuous improvement. So I see that as you're hearing the community and seeing how we can really implement this in a way at, you know, to go alongside with community and to educate our students and parents. I appreciate that. And so when you first mentioned the two face, you know, the face one is a testing and the testing is more, you know, you said there are teachers or parent initiated or recommended. And I wonder, there's conversation about universal screening because part of it is when it's parents or teachers, there are biases and also, you know, privilege that already kind of pushes a certain kind of students. And then the face one and face two, you know, if, if the intent is to make sure that we don't, that we don't lose anybody, I feel. So I guess, you know, later on down the road, I would like to hear a little more clarity in if everybody hit a certain threshold, then does the face two, does it limit that threshold or does that open it up? You know, because really our intent is to make sure that we do our due diligence to capture as much versus, you know, being very, in this case, very parsimonious and, you know, and sometimes if we put the multidisciplinary committee as a second base, that will become, if we are not trained, then human biases could come into play. So I'm just, you know, have conversation around that. I would also like to hear about you you presented percent qualify based on all who tested. But then I think it's more, we can get a whole bigger picture if we look at percentage who qualify based on the total number of second grader. Because based on who tested, again, is really sometime not an accurate function of who is, you know, who could potentially qualify.
Just to be clear, isn't, the screening is universal for second graders already? So, so with your first question, were you asking about making screening universal for every grade or for every new?
No, no, for, yes, so for the COGAT and the TCC, TTCT, we're doing both of that universally.
Yes.
Yeah. And I would, yeah, and we can do for, because like, you know, second, third grade, there are so many. I mean, there got to be at least a bit of a developmental kind of buffer because if we just capture everybody at second grade, you know, it is sometimes there's very like behavioral developmental nuances that could really impact their ability to take these tests. So I would open up that cushion a little bit more to make sure that are captured.
Can I just address a couple of them? And if you have more, great. But it was actually, the woman that we met with today really was pushing my thinking. She said, I would really challenge you to think about moving your universal screener from K and two. So for primary enrichment, we do, we universally screen using the COGAT. And then for second grade, last year we did the Torrance and the COGAT for everybody. And then Iowa for those who met criteria. This coming year, we're switching and we're going to be universally testing all second graders on Iowa, COGAT and Torrance. But she said, I would shift the kindergarten universe, universal assessment to fifth grade and universally screen right before the transition when students go to middle school. Because between second grade and fifth grade, is there is really more growth and development than K to two in those areas. And so she said, you know, use something that you're, a tool you already have as far as data for identifying students in kindergarten that you, you administer universally, but don't, don't go through this whole process at that grade, save that and do it in fifth grade. So that was something new to noodle on. And so it's definitely something that, that we'll be talking about. And then as to, I can totally grab the numbers for the whole number of second graders, not just those who tested. And then yeah, I think we addressed universal screening and the MDC. I do want to say, I understand the concern with potential bias and things. We do have, we make sure that there is a trained psychologist. There is a training that everybody on the MDC goes through as far as what they're looking for. And then our advisory did identify certain things to look for. So making sure that we did an extra careful dive into English language development, into 504s, IEPs, students. But there was, there are a series of them, really trying to go in with all lenses that they could have when trying to identify students. Doesn't mean that it's a perfect process, but I do think we were really intentional about it this year.
Now, and I think just to pay attention to it as we're moving forward to see where, you know, the gaps are. And just like when David said that he likes the quantitative data of giving students, teachers this information. I love those quantitative data, but part of it is parallel to, we have to make sure that teachers are trained as well to utilize that. Other time, we might potentially take a moment in time and continue a stereotype that this is all of the kids at that one moment. And if, you know, so a system, the implementation work when the person who's reading the data is knowing how to see potentially this one moment in time and be open to evolving, you know, and being reassessed and to reassess their understanding of the students. Otherwise, we could potentially fall into that mindset. This is, they can only be like this. And so that's why there's this parallel of teacher development. And I hear that from you all, which is really important. And just two more, I like how you mentioned.
Can we let Fred answer your question? Make a comment.
I, I think it was kind of covered there. Just, just to reiterate, because there's been a lot of back and forth, and I just don't want there to be any confusion. I think it's clear amongst this group, but just for everyone that our intention with that second grade universal screener is that it's an opt out only. So parents have to opt out. We automatically opt students in. Now, we communicate with families to make sure they know what we're opting their, their children into. But we too had a concern, and this goes back to that pre 2011 director did, where families were having to on their own advocate more. And now we're doing a lot more, especially third grade through eighth grade, with putting notices in the newspaper, with putting out information to families, noticing them early and making sure that it, that it is available to everyone who wants to nominate as well as second graders. It's an automatic.
Yeah, I see that. I've been seeing that, especially in the high school of all the testing and I appreciate that. And then I also want to make, what you also identified as one of the gifted areas of motivation. I really think that sometime motivation is not an internal reflection, but a reflection of students engagement with the school environment, with their teacher, with their curriculum. And so as we're looking for engagement, we see students are not engaged. We also have to reflect on ourselves, like what are we doing? Not really to pull these students in, you know? So again, things that we can change, right? Versus things that, that are more from the student side. And then I would also ask you to consider as kind of like a, what are the benefit? Do you think it'd be beneficial when you say you're doing this thought exchange to look at the students who are in the High Cap program? Would it be more beneficial to offer the thought exchange question to all students? To see what are the experience in the classroom to see if there, because again, I feel like that's another way to capture potentially students that we're missing. And so that's, this, I think, the whole, the purpose that you're all wanting to do a right, accurate identification process is always to make sure that we have these checks to make sure that we are capturing all of our students. And so I wonder if that would be beneficial to ask more than just the High Cap students that we have.
If I misspoke, my apologies. The intention of the thought exchange is, is to open it to all students. So I didn't intend for it to be only for parents or staff or students in High Cap. It's really for all.
Thank you.
And then, yes, absolutely.
That was done in the original study as well, that there was highly capable students who were part of the forums as well as gen and students, same with parents as well. So we've always included all students in those conversations and will continue to do so.
And then to the motivation piece. So I want to be clear, motivation is not one of the five index indices for giftedness, but it is so closely correlated. And I think one of the pieces that, that we, we all need to understand is that motivation is not the internal piece. And whatever a student brings to the table as far as motivation, that's what they're going to have forever. Motivation is something that is grown, right? Whereas other traits might be inherent. Motivation is, is grown by the opportunities provided. And so absolutely, that's one of those areas. And when we talk about interest and student interests, especially as we talk about project based learning and opportunities for extension, it really centers around student interest. And the more interest, the more likely the motivation. So, yes.
In there for a moment? I think, I think, are we done with this? Cause you still, are there any more questions? Are there any more questions from the room?
We do have one more part of the superintendent report that is operational. I did want to let the board know that tomorrow we will be sending out a communication to our family regarding the fast approaching October 18th date. I know you've all heard a lot about it in the news that this is the date by which our school employees have to be fully vaccinated. And we're really pleased to report that 98% and I think Erin says it's even higher than that. And we'll fix that in our, in our messaging, 98% of our school district employees are now fully vaccinated. This vaccine, vaccine mandate requirement will not in any way impact our classrooms or our school operations. And we're going to send that out tomorrow and direct people to the department. How OSPI is collecting this data and their report of all the districts in the state. I think should, they're saying about October 25th ish for that. And we also will update where we are in vaccination for our five to 11 year olds. Our team has worked really hard with our partners, you know, at Costco. And we are ready as soon as the FDA, who has come to move quickly on that vaccine. We are ready to help have a vaccine clinic like we did previously as soon as we get that federal pool. So we're going to send that messaging out tomorrow so that our parents will kind of know before that, we know there'll be lots of questions before the 18th. So I wanted to get it out to them before. Erin, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that as superintendent philosophy shared our vaccination rate of our staff on permanent assignment, so those on letters of assignment or contracts or our normal staff, for lack of a better term, is above the 98%. We're a little bit lower than that with respect to our substitute pool. But the biggest sort of issue that we're facing that everyone in the community is facing is shortages in the substitute pool. And that's been exacerbated by the vaccine mandate because sons are being hired into districts to replace people who maybe didn't meet the mandate or who chose to go on leave. So it's eroding our substitute pool. And we earlier worked with the MIA, our labor partners, to sort of evaluate our substitute pay rate. So we've increased our substitute pay rate for our certificate staff in an effort to attract and retain more of the substitute in an ever going to leave pool. But this is sort of also a shout out to our vaccinated community. They said that you're interested in substituting as either a parent or a certificate staff member. We're always welcoming new people into our pool. But it is also, I just want to thank our labor partners also for their help in spreading the word about vaccines. But it is also, I just want to thank our labor partners also for their help in spreading the word about vaccines. I think our success and the reason why we have such a vaccine, high vaccine rate is because of our community, but also because we have a strong partnership with M I E A. And we really support each other in getting our staff vaccinated early on. So we have people out there right away, assuming vaccine are educated for eligible vaccines. So I'm very thankful that we're not at a crisis front right now.
And we're working on volunteers as well, the ability for volunteers to submit their vaccination status. It's up and running and H R, left their hearts are putting you all about as well.
And I know that you played no small part in that, Erin, helping people to find vaccine locations early on when it was still scrambled. So thank you for that.
I, no question, I just want to say thank you. I know this was a huge, huge lift for H R and and so thank you to the support that you gave to our teachers, which in turn supports all of our students. So thanks for that.
And I apologize for the length of it, but that is our superintendent report. Thank you. Jamie, you can say goodbye now.
Thank you so much, Jamie.
Sorry, I took so much time. You guys have a good night.
It was great. Thank you. So I'm going to propose that we, we go through the next item, which Craig is going to be contributing to, and then we take a break after that, have a five minute break after that. Okay, next item then, word policy one thousand nine one, governance commitment, superintendent succession. We're going to start by hearing hearing Mark vacations director. I realize I've never said that word out loud before. About the life of the thought exchange.
Sorry, Craig, I'm getting up right now.
Do you mind answering as I go on? Thanks. Well, as you know, it, it, what was it, two meetings ago, you approved the, the purchase of Thought Exchange. And so we went ahead and had our first really district wide exchange, starting on September twenty seventh through October eighth to help with the superintendent succession. And thanks to your discussion at the study sessions, we came up with our open ended question. Please share your thoughts with the school board about what characteristics, skills and leadership qualities you would like to see in the next superintendent, as well as what you think are the most important tasks to accomplish. And go ahead, Andrew. Thank you. And our, and our participation probably exceeded what I thought. We had not done a district wide exchange, or we've done mostly focus groups when we were doing the studies and vision and mission two years ago. But we had nearly fifteen hundred participants. Sixteen hundred and eighteen thought and fifty seven thousand one hundred and ninety one rating. So everybody went in, did their bit to star ratings. And Andrew, go ahead and next one. And as you might imagine, two thirds of the participants were parents and guardians. Seventeen percent staff. I was really pleased to have fourteen percent, just over two hundred students. And credit to Mr. Swanson and the leadership class and messages on psychology. It was, it was really good to get that student voice in. I felt very good about that. Five percent community members. And four percent others, people have that option on there to, to put them down as something else. Thanks. Again, the presentation was divided about how you would think between the schools, not surprisingly, the high school with almost fifty percent of the respondents saying that was the the place that they were attached to or best associated with. Northwood, you can see, you can see the, pretty much the rest, but pretty much what you would expect on that response. Thanks. One of the things that Thought Exchange does is this wonderful word cloud. And these are all automatically generated slide out of the, I made a few edits. But basically, these are generated by Thought Exchange itself. And, and not surprisingly, transparency came up as the number one most used, top rated word in the whole thing with communications. Second, excellence, listening, achievement, success. So, so it's, I love that word cloud of them. It's awesome. This is just such a wonderful tool and a fun tool for me to work with as well. Go ahead and do your thing. These were your top three thoughts. Making sure our district has good teachers. Supporting all children in the district, whether gifted or struggling. And more of a comment than a thought, I guess, folks move to M I for the schools and it's imperative that we keep M I S D is the pinnacle of public education success. We'll need to be open minded. And so those were, if you average all the thoughts out and all the comments, those all got four point threes and were your your top rated thoughts. And just so everybody knows, and we can share this out more broadly, all the thoughts are available at the same link slash results from the thought. So if the community, we want to share with the community, all of the thoughts, if they want to pour through all, what did I say, seventeen hundred thought? They can. So it's really, that's just the top three. We'll go through the next slide. We'll, we'll show you by, by theme. These are the A I generated themes by star score. Communications, decision making. If you're, again, you were asking about qualities you want to see in the next superintendent. Academic excellence, themes about staff. Leadership, parents, about the district. About, it says, learning kids is really, I would say, teaching and learning. The opportunity for change. And then the last one is kind of like other, basically, when it's someone. Go ahead. Thanks, Andrew. Thoughts on communication, because that was your, if you remember back to the word cloud, that was probably what the number two thing. Clear communication, communicate clearly, effectively and transparently. There's that word again. With students, parents, school staff and the school board. Transparency and clear and concise communication. So those are the top three thoughts on, on that A I generated theme. Thoughts on decision making there. Integrity is one of the most important characteristics for superintendent. Transparency and problem solving. So those were the, the top three on decision making. A couple more on this. Here are the, the top three on thoughts on academic excellence. Vision, common sense to make M I S D weaken of academic excellence. Renewed focus on academic excellence. So that came up pretty frequently until emphasis on teaching students, maintaining and promoting academics. So those are all things. They were about, if you looked at all of the thoughts, there were about eighty thoughts that got four or better. Thoughts from staff about things. Staff, again, asking and coming on transparency, listening to the community and staff, transparency. And we need someone who believes that student voice and staff voice matter. So really nice turnout of thoughts about staff and from staff. Thoughts on leadership. This came up quite a bit in the, in the word crowd. The desire on the behalf of, of those just saying that, that we behave political. That we need a nose to the grindstone and hands on leader, a leader who leads by example. A non-political leader, someone who will build trust in the community, not just the loudest or the most popular political talking point. So that, that definitely was a theme throughout the exchange. And those, those are fairly highly rated thoughts as well about leadership quality. Thoughts from parents, who made up again, two thirds of the respondents. Superintendent should be a great listener and communicate, a great listener first and communicator second. Transparency, I mean, you can see that in every slide. Truly listens to the needs of families in the district, including parents and students. Again, those are all thoughts that were four point zero or above, which was just, just about eighty of my recall. Thoughts about the district, again, the importance of, of good teaching and learning, supporting all students. These are some of the same thoughts actually from the fairly high rated thoughts from, from the other slide as well. So, so pretty clear themes. About teaching and learning, positive engagement, rigorous supportive differentiated learning, critical thinking, creativity, innovation. So that's like one of our unknowns. Strategic thinking, the superintendent must prioritize the fact that learning is key, basic discipline and not, again, being a political as well. Thoughts. Some of the thoughts, the, the top thoughts around change, and these rank just a little bit below, just below the four point. But probably in the, I would say in the top one hundred thought. Again, providing students with the skill they need to assess one today's world. Highly organized and effective and efficient communication, open minded leadership. That does not defer to the loudest voices in the room. Superintendent forward thinking in terms of understanding how the world is changing and therefore how our kids' education should change. Characteristics of, of the next, desire to the next superintendent. Good communicator, focus on academic excellence. Need someone who can retain good teachers and hire better teachers. And we need someone who puts students first. Well, that's our value vision and mission. So again, those were all four point and above thoughts. So I mean, I, I really enjoyed this tool. I, I thought it was, and I am so glad to hear from Fred and Jamie that they're planning to do it for, for highly capable staff and we can use it in so many ways. We have, there's just tons of reports that can come out of this. It's, it's just such a vigorous tool. Whatever the board desires to look at all the thoughts or have us provide deeper, a deeper dive into it is certainly something that we can do as well. And we can share out with our families and the community what we found. Anybody have any, any questions or about the process?
Yeah, I really enjoyed the process, like both, both from the back end and the front end, taking part in it and seeing how the comments come in every day and people uploading them. I just wanted to add to your mention that anyone can click on the link that has gone out many times. You can destroy things on the district website. And you don't even need a special link. You just click on like, see the box.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just the original.
The original change is still there. And that, that there is a screen then that comes up that shows a bunch of those words from the word cloud. And you can click on a word and it'll take, it'll show you all the box on that word. And then you can rank them by most, most highly rated and most lowly rated. And I actually personally found it really interesting to look at the lowest grade box as well, like what, what statements are people making that are not being supported by other parents, students?
Yeah, and it'll create, they call it Masonry. I love these names.
Yeah.
And it'll create a little title for you.
Yeah.
Of, of all those key thoughts.
So really, really worth looking at. And that'll be up for the foreseeable future.
Yeah.
Anyone else have comments or questions about the thought exchange, right?
Yeah, I just want to say a shout out to leadership who put this forward and really monitored it. And to everybody across our community who participated in this. This is going to be so useful to have all of this information as we continue to talk about next steps and where we're headed as a board. It's going to be incredibly valuable. So let's just think, reach out all around.
I echo that. And I'm fascinated with the word transparency. And I like that one of them said, want to know the why. I mean, that's something that I really, you know, that, that draws me. It would be really interesting to kind of delve into that deeper because transparency, I, I think it's misused a lot of times. I mean, we hear that from the board, that the board isn't transparent. Meanwhile, ninety nine percent of what you do is in public. You just have to look. So, and, and our discussions and everything. So I mean, is that what is being talked about? Is it that they want, like, what, what is it? What is not transparent and what are people looking for? I really would love to explore that at some point because obviously it's the most common theme. And it's to me very frustrating because it can mean so many different things. And I want to know, what, what is it that we can be doing better? And how can we, why do people feel like things are, it, it almost feels like people are, that things are happening with, that they have no control over? And, and, and why are they, I mean, is it the times of COVID that we're all feeling a bit out of control with that? Anyways, I would love to have, to figure out a way to dive deeper into that.
I think, I think that's it. But I did want to say thank you so much, Craig, for all of your help with this. And I think everyone who knows that tomorrow is your last day because you are headed off to a new job in Camino Island. So we're, we're really, but yay for you. And we're, we're all really grateful for everything you've done for the district, especially the last couple of very challenging years. So thank you.
Well, and, and I just want to thank all of you on the boards, Ben Kaloski, the cabinet here. I couldn't have asked for a more wonderful, almost six years here. And I'm going on to my fourth district in, as a school mediation professional. And just so grateful, the Mercer Island will always be a very special place for me and my family. Most of them grow up here, grew up here. And, and just thank you all for your service and, and making students a priority. Thank, thank you.
With that, I think we're going to take a five minute break. Is five minutes enough or is it four hours?
Eight, seven minutes? Seven, seven minute break, everyone. We'll reconvene at eight.
We'll reconvene at eight. We're back in session after our break. Next item is Board Policy 1809, Communication and Support to the Board, Revision to BP 2314, Equivalency Credit for High School Courses, First Reading.
So, staff have been working on policy updates as they've come, as they've come particularly through WSTA, through the legislative sessions. In fact, today we were all together in a pre, pre-board meeting, committee meeting, went, oh gosh, there's the new policy that's just come out guidance. So, this is one of those ones that we've been working on. I'm going to turn it over to Fred for this first reading. Discussion, no action is necessary on this for tonight. Fred?
Thank you. I will go ahead and share my screen and bring a couple of things up. So just kind of a big picture piece, course equivalencies are really important, especially in the era of 24 credits to graduate. Because what it allows our students to do is to take, to take a course and actually receive multiple credits for it. And it really helps our students particularly as they're thinking about their CTE pathways or their CCR pathways towards graduation. And so it's one of, I would say, three main tools that our students or that our counselors use with our students when we're thinking about how to be really efficient, supportive, and remove barriers for our students as they're thinking about graduation. The other thing that I would add is there's kind of two other levers, if you will, that we use. And they're not up for discussion tonight, but I think it's always important to remember that we also have dual credit. And we have our students who can earn a high school credit and a post-high school college credit at the same time. And then the third one that we oftentimes use is the competency credits. And we've done some work around that policy. And competency credits historically have been really for rural language, where a student is particularly a native speaker, can earn credits in the language that been expanded. And so some examples of that recently is we may have a student who, for a variety of reasons, it could be a medical reason, perhaps struggled in algebra or the second half of algebra, and possibly even failed the class. But if they go on and they take geometry or algebra too, and life circumstances change and they pass with a C or better, they can actually retrieve that credit without having to go back and have seat time. And so those are really important factors, especially maintaining on-time graduation and getting students on into college or to their career. This particular policy though, that I am putting forth before the board has, of course, a board policy element to it, the BP, and it also has the P attachment. Really, the work that we started to work on with this was on the, was on the procedural side and not on the policy side. There were some updates to the language around, you know, what is an equivalency, how do CTE courses play into that? We've, of course, had some changes over time in titles, so we updated that. But one of the most important changes and why it was under review through WSTA had to do with computer science and annual reporting. So there are some computer science courses that are approved now as a math class as it's moving through. And then we also do some reporting and some metrics on that. As of course, whenever we're reviewing a procedure, we're also looking at the policy. And that's why I brought the policy for you tonight as well. And not simply because they're in our existing policy. There are actually some procedural elements that were in the policy that are actually a procedure. And so there's nothing of great substance of a change to your, to the board policy. But I certainly didn't want you to see a change in board policy without the accompanying procedure. So, no changes in terms of what we're doing with that, but just moving procedural elements out of a policy into the procedure and then updating the whole. So with that, I'll take questions.
I just have comments to say, I love the direction this is going. And I really was happy to read this through and to see that the changes that were made, made it broader and more flexible and more useful and more kind of helpful to students. So, great job.
Thanks. We, we've kind of started a little process and it started as ad hoc. And I think it's going to pick up and it's, we're kind of doing these student support team meetings between learning services, high school counselors, high school administrators, and department chairs. Because we have some unique situations that are emerging that we haven't seen before. Either students that are moving in, who are beyond the typical age of high school, coming in from other countries and their credits aren't matching up. Or because of the pandemic, we're certainly seeing some nuances. And we are really working hard to try to get together a multidisciplinary team to look at each case, think about what are all the levers we can pull to try to, A, make sure that there is the accountability to the standard that we want for a high school graduate from Rooster Island. But doing it in a way that's flexible and that takes away what may have been barriers in the past to keeping them graduating and moving on. So, that's been just the ad hoc change that we've started this year. And we're really excited about the opportunities for our students.
I also feel like this syncs up really well with what that professor was telling you guys today about focusing on students' talents, you know, kind of because this definitely, this is, this is one way of kind of giving the students opportunities to, to work on their talents and use their talents. Brian, you have something to?
Yeah, a lot of this is just housekeeping and cleaning things up in the documents. And I love seeing this come forward. I know our work on the legislative committee through WSTA and the work we've done with WASA and all the other groups in the alphabet soup in Washington State. And connecting with our state legislature, state board of education, and state superintendent, who have all been moving mountains in these areas. And it really is student focused. It's not about lessening anything or making it easy in any way. But it's really recognizing when students have capital in certain area, when they've really demonstrated this mastery and they've got these skills, and letting them be able to really use that to the best advantage because it frees up time for them to focus on other things they're passionate about. It relieves pressure for them. And they shouldn't have been being penalized or jeopardized because of something that's sometimes out of their control. So I think when it comes to student centered policy, this is one of the best things that our state is doing right now around this and dual credit and multiple pathways. I think it's just awesome.
Does computer science get to count as a language? But anyway, that's my real question. I leave that for the alphabet soup legislators. You know, the interesting thing to me, I love this. And the interesting thing to me though was it looked like there was a large approval group around it. I'm just wondering, like from a student trying to access this, how daunting does it feel? Like, do I, who do I talk to? Do I know this is available? Should I be worrying that, you know, I didn't pass geometry, but I did pass calculus? And am I not going to graduate? How does that, that kind of happen?
As soon as students fall into that situation, Director De Souza, that's really where our counselors come in. Because then we start talking about what does the, what does the credit retrieval process look like for that student? And so we can look at an ALE option for credit recovery. We can look at a summer school option for credit recovery. We can look at this option for credit recovery. We can also look at proficiencies on SBA in some disciplines as well. And so that's really where, once a student has, you know, not passed a class, it starts to become that, that talk with the, with the counselor about, are we going to get back on track? And so it's not so much about them needing to know dual credits and competency credits and whatnot. It's really, that's us to really know and do a really good job making sure that we're following through and creating those. My phone rings often from the counselors, how about this idea? Maybe I can check with Jamie. You think Jamie would agree with that? And, you know, it's really comes from a place of compassionate educators in the counseling department and at the high school who, you know, they try to do everything they can to try to work around different angles. And it's, you know, every now and then we have to say, you know, there isn't a workaround, but that's getting rarer and rarer because of the opportunities that we have for that.
Thank you.
So this was the question only. So if there are no more comments, we will move on. Thank you so much for that.
Yep. And we'll put it on the consent agenda for the next week.
So, the next one is Board Policy 1809, Budgeting slash Financial Planning.
So, six years ago, the board that was here at that time approved a capital technology levy. And so now it is time for the renewal of that, that levy of six year renewal. And so we talked about it a lot over the summer and even starting last spring, and it's upcoming. And so Ty is here to present to you the draft resolution. This is the first reading for discussion purposes. And we will have a second reading with formal approval at our next regular scheduled meeting. So, Ty?
So, Superintendent Policy said this is the six year capital levy. It's a replacement for our existing levy. And what the capital and technology levy allows the district to do is to provide regular improvements, lifespan, lengthening improvements to buildings, allowing us to preview roofs, replace boilers, add porpoils, modular buildings, modular buildings. Without having the need to offer a bond, that also allowed us to do the long range facility masterclass. The technology side has allowed us to have the one-to-one iPad program, that certain technology coaches, exceptional professional development for our staff. And as we're looking forward into the next levy cycle, we're looking at continuing to keep up the district facilities as standard, which we're used to. These funds are restricted solely for the use of facility improvements and technology expenditures. So we're looking at potential classroom upgrades, depending on, on what's it, replacing some of the boilers, some of the older elementary buildings, roofing some of the older, older facilities. And looking at more of a infrastructure heavy technology. A lot of our servers, routers, and other infrastructure that we rely on to continue to educate our students needs to be replaced. Along with those needs is a recognition that inflation, inflation is rampant, especially in the construction industry and the technology industry as materials are getting scarcer for the construction, the needed systems that we need. And so as we were looking at building the capital facility side and the technology side, we made sure to look at not only what do we need, but what's potential inflation as we're looking forward. And while it is a larger levy than the last cycle, we also have significant cost increase that we're facing as we go forward. So, we, we're trying to make sure that we're not being extravagant and are asked for community, or we do need to be making sure that we are counting for the increased costs that we're facing in the future.
Which one would you like? Can you go to the those levies? Just want to revise.
Yeah. All right. As we're looking at the table, I know it's small numbers. I apologize. I'm a small numbers kind of guy. It's the last, the column where it says capital levy. The top half of that is the historical balance that we have in the last cycle. So bouncing So bouncing around six and a half million. As we're looking at the 23 to 28 years, that's what we are proposing that we put out to the community. And this, those are the numbers that are on the resolution attached to this agenda. So we're looking at starting at about seven and three quarters million and moving up to just over eight and a half million. And again, this reflects the higher level of staffing that we've been placing within the technology side of the levy, the increased costs for infrastructure replacement, both on capital and technology and inflation. So as we're looking at those rates, the capital rate per thousand, so per thousand assessed value, has been historically running around forty-three, forty-four cents per thousand. As we're looking forward into the next cycle, it goes up to about fifty cents per thousand, to fifty-two at the last year. So it is a slight increase. But again, we're facing significant increase in in order to maintain the levels of service that we need and ensure the continuity of operations. This is what we feel is prudent to go out with. This is also assuming that housing costs are increasing about 1%. The assessed values are increasing about 1%. And we, which is fairly consistent, you can see on the far side, it's been wildly inconsistent over the last few years.
Can I, can you just explain, sorry to interrupt. So I'm noticing, I, this is complex for me. The capital rate, I'm noticing that, you know, from the 2017 to 2021 decreases. And then from 22 to 28, it increases. So I'm just kind of looking at anomalies. Can you kind of explain that?
So when we, when we go out with the levy amount, that levy amount is fixed by the ballot. We can only collect eleven million dollars. As property values increase, distributed across each of those homes, that amount per hundred thousand decreases. Or the amount assessed per thousand decreases. Part of the reason why it's going up in those last years is because we're assuming the rate of increase in the dollar value of the levy is outpacing the rate of increase in assessed value. Got it?
And what we went out with the levy in 2016 was a higher number in 2021 than it shows now, right? Just because we didn't expect coffee prices to go up as quickly.
Yeah, yeah. And within the resolution itself, if we get a pop over the resolution, one of the things that we need to consider is this fluctuation in housing prices. So when we're looking at the rates, when we come out with resolutions, we specify specifically each year what we are planning to collect. But we also have to specify each year what we assume will be a max value per assessed value. Next of our values process. Max rate per thousand of assessed value. Within the levy resolution, we set that cap at seventy-five cents per thousand. So that gives us the ability to adjust for flexibility or variations. Heaven forbid, assessed values on a million tank. I know, I'm not the, I'm here, right? I mean, I have to, I have to be conservative. But it allows for flexibility variation to ensure that we are able to collect what we need to in terms of dollar value per assessed value. So for the capital technology levy, this is our plan. And this is what we're asking the board to approve to be placed on the February ballot. So we're looking at initially starting off at seven point seven million, ramping up to eight point four million. And projected levy cents per dollar, thousand of assessed value. Hovering around fifty to fifty-two cents. Any questions about the resolution or about?
Not so much a question, but just adding in part of the history through your leadership as well as Tony Kuhn and work with Randy Fox. And you've done amazing things with your capital budget and always looking for matching grants and other ways to stretch that even further. And so this is an extraordinary investment book from our community, but an investment that has been really well leveraged and used for as long as I've been watching this. So I just wanted to put that reflect one in there.
Thank you. I do want to call out Director Kuhn and Randy Fox for their work. They do a phenomenal job in making sure that we're not only extending the life of buildings as much as possible, but also thinking forward about, you know, what do they look like five years from now? How do we, how do we continue to have these buildings where we need to be? Without a bond to replace them. So it's, they've done phenomenal work finding themselves. And kudos to Andrew for his work in the technology side. And really, really stretching the district's resources to be responsible for the dollars and to really focus on that technology training for staff. For taking such a deep dive into technology on that plan. So he did a lot of work on making that stuff. Good to see him.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you again for all this time. I like all the thanks as well. And call out to the CMIS team. I hope they're listening and watching tonight, citizens from Reston Island Public Schools. That's the campaign team that would help push this. And I hope they are thinking about getting organized and helping make this, make this happen in February, right? So we call out to parent volunteers and hope to see you at our CMIS meeting at some point. So, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion today? Yeah, okay. We're ready to do the next one then.
Ty, will you just slide down next to down that way?
Board Policy 1800OE6, More Budgeting Financial Planning. This one is the Opposition of Educational Maintenance and Operations.
So this levy is a four-year levy. It was the first time we approved the enrichment levy and had to include that word in it was actually back in October of 2017. Some of you were there for that. We had a lengthy discussion based on the new formula for how our levy collection would work. But we did a first reading, just like we're doing now in October. And hopefully the approval at the second meeting in October for the educational maintenance operations, where somewhere in the title we'll need to have enrichment because that was part of the new law and the steps that Tyga has to go through as well to have this resolution go through the prosecutor's office. Thank you. It's a new process. So this one is a little different, but Ty explained the differences here.
So that enrichment or educational programs and operations is set up so that it provides additional resources for the district beyond what a state considers basic yet. We use the EPNA let, education programs and operations to support our special education department. Thirty-five percent of our special education budget comes from our levy. We use it to support our staffing in terms of additional staffing as well as staffing above what we get funded on average per staff by the state. We use it to allow us to be competitive in the marketplace according to the requirements that you're already for. We use it to support the seventh period day at the high schools, to support our transportation department. We're not fully funded for transportation under the formulas. We use it to support the cost of insurance and maintenance and other programs throughout the district. And it is incredibly important for the operations in the district. So we rely on it significantly as we do our best to make sure that we are making sure, especially as we're looking forward in the next few years of what our students need. As part of the discussion we're having with the CFOs in the region, we're discussing levy limits. And what we want to bring forward to the next legislative session is about how do we, how we talk about this. But as we're talking about our replacement levy, if we can go back to that revised levy rate, our formulas for enrichment levies are faced by legislative statute. And we receive an allotment per student FTE. And so as our enrollment changes, therefore, our, we'll have the authority changes from the state. So in order for us to give ourselves maximum flexibility for enrollment changes, we had a discussion a month ago, a little over a month ago, about the comfort level of the board going out for twelve million dollar levy. Historically, we run between eleven and eleven point four million dollars for, was that, under the new formula, under the new formula. And you can see on the slide at the very top, the premium query amount of seventeen, just under seventeen million. That's what it was before as a percentage of our previous year's expenditures. Now it's a rate per student FTE. So as we're looking at what we're proposing from the ballot of twelve million dollars, that gives us the ability to adjust for student fluctuation. And it gives us capacity in case the legislature adjusts the levy formula so we can collect at a higher rate for students without having to back to the community for supplemental levy, which is fraught with risks on all sides. So it gives us maximum flexibility. What happens when we, on an annual basis, I get a report from OSPI that says, this was the number of students last year. This is your rate per student and this is your maximum levy authority. And then in October, which is coming next, we bring resolution to the board saying, this is what we are certifying the key county assessors as what needs to be collected. We pass the resolution and we send it to the assessor's office saying, we said we were offering twelve million dollars, but our levy thirty is eleven point two. Please collect eleven point two. And so we will never be collecting more than what is appropriate for us according to the formula by OSPI. So that resolution is actually coming next working. So everything will be voting. But that's what we're looking at. Historically, we've been averaging about seventy-five cents per thousand for the enrichment levy over the last four years. We are asking for a dollar per thousand, again, for that flexibility variation. Again, you won't be collecting that dollar per thousand, you're collecting what is proposed by the levy authority under OSPI. Any questions for the EPNA levy?
Again, so going back to the top of our meeting, a couple hours ago, we talked about FTE versus headcount. Since it's two thousand five hundred dollars per student maximum, FTE or headcount?
FTE. We get funded on the FTE. So if we have a fraction of a student, a student only comes four hours a day, you only get that four hours, about point six of a student. And that's.
Anybody else? No, no questions?
All right. These will come back to you for a second reading. We have always traditionally left it on the regular part of the agenda, not consent agenda, because it's really important and we're never gonna move on to make sure that it's emphasized in that way. So we'll see these again.
Great, thank you. Next up is for action and discussion, Board Policy 5415, Educational Administration and Support Personnel Salary Schedules for Non-Represented Employees.
So I'm gonna ask Erin to get a mic while she's doing that, she'll go talk you through the process for this. But as you know, our Singleton position of Communications Coordinator, tomorrow is his last day. And so as we went through our human resources processes of getting ready to post that position, one of our particular in Singleton, one of our processes is to do that comparative. It's part of an operational expectation. And so Erin, what's her card? One more thing that added to her plate. And she's gonna talk to you a little bit about why we are coming forward with this recommendation to a change for that position within fifty-four, fifteen. Erin?
Yes, um. Okay, perfect. Sure, John. So we are making upward adjustment for the Communications Coordinator position, which created a vacancy. We did an assessment of neighboring districts. We took our typical ten that we do when we do bargaining, et cetera, and realized that most of the larger districts in that group of ten have a team of communication coordinator for people in charge of communication. If someone be assigned to website, management, someone else would be the assistant director, someone else would be community relations coordinator. So there is that aspect. And then in the Singleton position, so the smaller districts, their pay was typically much higher than ours. So we looked at a couple of other districts beyond the ten we normally compare of that did have stable positions to see sort of what their pay ranges were and came to the realization that we were underpaying for what we were wanting. We did increase the responsibilities within our communications coordinator's position to include more website management and more social media work and adding things like videography, which are things that we've had to outsource in the past, which we're hoping any person will bring that skillset and we're specifically looking for that, as well as some additional support with public records. So we did expand the obligation of that role to include more of that and some more tech skill is what we're looking for. So now we upwardly adjusted it and it's more aligned with Bay Ridge there at a hundred and ten thousand, where their person may have a single person. Tom Waters at a hundred and nine, they had a single person. For review, we did in our, in our normal comparative group, they have a student single person in their one eleven, seven forty, so to one sixty. So they have a range. So that, we felt it was appropriate to increase our wage given what we were expecting.
Erin, can you share a little bit about the comparison on the schedule itself for the professional technical schedule?
Oh, sure. The other thing that Donna is specifically referencing, if you didn't look at our prop techs who do, are sort of coordinators of budget, accounting and payroll benefit. And if you were to take that hourly rate and make it a salary, assuming no overtime, it is comparative. So we, all of our coordinators are roughly making the same amount. Although at this point in time, our budget, accounting, payroll, do have the opportunity rate at its overtime, which is not something that we want. So it is aligned with our other coordinators as well. Any questions about the why or how we got to the amount here?
No, that seems very reasonable, especially, especially if the job itself is changing and you're needing additional skills and additional work. That seems very reasonable and very worth watching.
How many years of experience are we expecting in, in a role with a school district or anything like that?
We're not necessarily limiting it to school districts. They have a lot of the skillsets that we see are tangible across industry. We are looking for people who have experience in either community relation or in journalism or that type of thing, where they are actively working on communication. And we really are looking for that tech aspect that we have not necessarily targeted in the past. Because as we've learned over the past year and even through this thought exchange experience, there are much more, what we're doing is less about newsprint and more about how are the, what are the different ways we can reach our community? And that aligns, we think, with what we're seeing from the feedback from our community is they want to be reached. They want that transparency, which means we need to be able to explore all the different opportunities and avenues. And so we're looking for someone who has basically more tools in their toolkit than we have in the past in terms of technology. So that, that's what we're looking for. Where ideally, you want at least a bachelor's degree in the job description and some industry experience that is not. So that, that's what we're looking for. Where ideally, you want at least a bachelor's degree in the job description and some industry experience that is not in two schools.
And you added extra items like the public records request and all that. How does that. Play into the fact that we want more communication and more transparency and perhaps more frequent updates of the website, that type of stuff? But are enough hours in the day to do everything?
I think there is, again, the, the public record process is just supporting the request, it's not necessarily processing them, it is supporting that. And the, and it is being more present and. And that's nothing to take away from Craig. I don't want this to be a criticism of him. There are enough hours in the day. It's just readjusting of what the expectations of the job are. And really looking at what positions we have, because we do have at each school, I did one side coordinator. So what is it that they're doing that maybe can be readjusted and really changing the focus a bit? Thank you. No other questions?
We did ask for action on this as well as the discussion. Erin, HR. Which is Erin and her team do have this position posted. We. Are closing in, I believe, next week until being able to move forward with the salary. We did need that approval because this is a board policy.
It is closing on the 23rd, which is the Saturday. We're hoping to interview. Right now, we're going to have. A vacant position, and it is one that we feel is critical to community information.
Definitely. I would be proud of you.
I approve one call.
Second?
All in favor of approving Board Policy 5415, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they nay. No need, no extensions, that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you so much, Erin. Next, we have a post-monitoring language review of Board Policy 1004, monitoring board governance process and board superintendent relationship policies. This for discussion only. So this is. Sorry. My glasses. The Board Policy 1004, 2021, this is an opportunity to review the language of the policy and suggest any revisions, supported by a majority of the board. Do folks have any? Comments, suggestions? I'm hearing nothing. I got nothing myself. Yeah. Nothing. Okay, well, that was bad discussion. Okay, good to have had the opportunity though. Next up is Board Policy 1805, staff evaluation and instructional practices, language review, also for discussion. Did anyone have any comments, questions, concerns about this? Pam? Yes? That calls so I knew. Okay. Next up is the consent agenda.
And we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they nay. No need and no extensions, that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Really quickly, next week is school bus safety week. And working with our partners at MIPD, they were also noticing that. Folks had forgotten some of the rules when school buses are on the road, which means you don't pass. And we even have the security camera arms and all in our buses that we did in partnership with the PD. And it's a little bit humorous to know that a couple of our bus drivers radioed in to dispatch and said, there's a police car following me. And it was really because they had noticed as well that, so they were reminding folks. So school bus safety week is a really great time for all of us to remember that when school buses are on the road. There are some regulations that we all need to follow to keep our students safe. And also during this week, our students will be practicing their school bus evacuation drills as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and acknowledge the great work that our bus drivers do. Also, next week, to remind you to the board, you have your special meeting for a site visit in person. Woo-hoo, at Northwood. It starts at eight thirty. And that agenda, I believe, posted has all the elements too. It is, it is a special meeting. It is a site visit. There will not be Zoom available. There's no public input at that meeting. It really is just an opportunity for the board to. Visit the site, see things in action, meet with staff. The PTA will organize parents to meet at that time as well, as well as the administration team. So if you aren't going to be able to come to that, please let us know because they are developing that schedule. And we do, of course, have to follow all of the COVID mitigation strategies that are in place at the school. And that's all I have for announcements.
Thank you. Pam, Legislative Representative reporting.
So I sent you all a link to fill out your top fifteen legislative position priorities. But then I apparently missed a couple of prior positions. So my apologies. And if you give me another day or two to go back to fill in. Then you can fill those out. Then I will analyze the score and email to all of you. And then also, on, I just got an email for to me yesterday by Brian. Thank you, Brian, for that. Of a meeting of the advocacy group, the PT advocacy group that are meeting on Friday, the third Fridays. At nine o'clock. And I just got the email yesterday. And unfortunately, my Friday is all booked with student meetings and I can't change that. So I was wondering if any of you could come to the advocacy meeting just to. Have some board representation to hear, you know, what are some of the concerns of parents and what have they been working on for this upcoming year?
Pam, is that in person or a Zoom meeting?
I believe it's a Zoom meeting. At nine o'clock this, tomorrow. At nine o'clock.
Yeah, I could say that.
Wonderful. I will forward you the email, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Okay. Word reports. Brian?
I've been actually pretty quiet in this area. So in the WASTA's networking webinar, it's happened every week. They've shifted the protocol a bit and they're opening with news from the field and good news from the field. Which is really great to hear how school districts are using their asset funds, how they're recovering, rebuilding. And it's been really nice to hear positive stuff happening from the state. So just for that alone, to lean into that. And then, of course, there's always a bevy of new changes and updates. We, the governor had a press conference this afternoon, so we've got some new updates that will be adjusted. We'll be learning about those on Thursday. The Eastside Work Group, we spent time really last week kind of checking in with each other and sort of to build the framework for our presentation. An annual conference. And I think that we just received confirmation that we'll be able to attend in person to the conference, which is good. The other thing from the, we prepped so that as we sat down, the group is kind of looking to think of next steps, the next iteration of the group and what that might look like. So the group kind of said, we would settle into advocacy around continued enrollment stabilization. We know this is an issue for the state. Partner in sharing urgency with Washington Department of Health. And made a suggestion that public health set out a thank you and acknowledgement of the massive number of vaccinated educational staff that we have. It's so important to what we're doing. And I think we have a letter out. It's been a while since we met with Superintendent Reitgall. And so we're going to get that on our calendar and get things by the back end to the room. Let's, we can talk about continued stabilization and relief funds for our districts. Other than that, I have PAC meetings coming up in the next week, as well as the Teaching and Learning Advisory will be my first time with that. So I'm really excited to look forward to that. That's it for me.
It's been a busy couple of weeks. First of all, I just want to acknowledge that I'm here instead of my daughter's first varsity soccer game. So, and I'm here. Happily serving. And also that, you know, it's homecoming weekend. And I know that a letter went out from our community leaders emphasizing safety. And it's, it's going to be a really fun weekend. They didn't get any of this last year. So really excited for the high school students. And please be safe because we care about you. I know none of you are watching, but you know, just pass it on. I. So I attended the inclusive practices group, the, the opening meeting for the groups for this school year. And it's the third year of it. And, you know, it was just really great to get together to kind of talk about where we are, where we want to go. And I'm really excited about the continued work. I don't have a lot of details, but I'm really excited about the continued work that. We're being led by Dr. Boobie, who's the coordinator for the group. And, you know, it's going well. It's very in line with our district priorities and what I'm seeing as the school's improvement plans as well. And speaking of that, I attended the Island Park PAC meeting on Tuesday for TAM. And I attended the West Mercer PAC meeting yesterday. Island Park, I was thrilled that it was in person. And West Mercer was, was by Zoom, but it was, it was just fun to go into a school and it was after school. Oh, no, it was at school was ending. So I did see students, but it was at school was ending. And it's just exciting to see the work they're doing. I'm really looking forward to the school improvement plans that we're going to see coming up. They talked about it a bit, talking about the support they're giving to teachers and to students. And just really looking forward to seeing how they are adjusting. I would note that our educators seem. Exhausted, as well as I know our leadership team is, and frankly, as well as students are. And I just want to kind of remind people that, that it's the middle of October. We have a long school year to go and just encourage our staff to make sure that they're keeping an eye on themselves. And then also supporting our students with that as well, because there, there seems like there's very much a tone of. We've got a lot of work to do and I don't know if it's backfiring. Because I, I think everyone just needs to take a deep breath and be. Move, move along at an appropriate pace as kids are getting readjusted to school. I think Donna wants to. I just want to say that we need to pace ourselves. And I know our student reps aren't here, but they did talk about the student advisory. And so I asked them a couple of questions. And one of them wants, if you could say anything to your teachers to help be successful for the rest of this year, what would it be? And they talked about, please remember, we're all fatigued. And on Zoom last year, you were really cognizant of giving us breaks. Please continue to give us those breaks, even if it's just stand up and stretch. And so we're, the leadership team kind of modeled that as well, that it is about pacing ourselves. And that, that steady pace versus, you know, the whole marathon versus sprint analogy. We do, it is only October and we do need to make sure that we're taking care of each other. Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, and, and just making sure that our, our staff knows that. This is the priority too, because I know that there's often a lot of pressure from other sources that are pushing, pushing. And then finally, I'm not really sure how to bring this up. Whether it's a motion or, which I can't really do, but I'm just going to bring it up as, as a concern. I'm very concerned that one of our public inputs today was violated the stability policy, was bullying and harassing towards one of our board directors. I understand, I don't want to give it more attention than is due, but I am proposing that we remove that when we post it. That we remove that public comment from, or at least edit it so that the beginning of it can be in there. And then when it starts to get inappropriately personal towards one board director, that that be taken out. I, I'm not a fan of censorship, but what happened was inappropriate. And it was unprofessional. I think it violated our stability policy. We know what's at play. I'm not going to say it, but it's not okay. And if we don't stand up for our, our values, then we can't expect anyone else to.
I was going to actually suggest maybe adding a reminder of the stability policy to the, the thing, the spiel that we read before public input every time. Because currently, it's just all about like how to act that way and don't name, don't call it students by name without their, their family's permission. So I would propose that at a future meeting, the board, the discussion about what to maybe add to that introductory spiel. If you're more interested.
I don't have a problem with that, but that doesn't solve this one. I, you know, if, I certainly have no problem. You violated a policy, I think. I don't know, but we need to have a hearing about it. Which I think is justification enough to remove it. You know, this hasn't come up before as we, I guess, with the CCTV, it's always been broadcast. But, you know, with, with Zoom, we know people go in and watch it. And I, I think we need to lead by example. And if people aren't comfortable with removing the entire thing, then cutting it at a point where. Like I said, it gets personal. I, I feel very strongly that we need to take action on this.
We can't really take action on it though, because we haven't like noticed the, the.
The problem is it gets posted. So I don't know how we do this, but I would ask that, that public input not be posted until this can be adjusted. If that's the case, and that's fine. We don't have to address it right now, but the reason I bring it up instead of on the next agenda is because we post the, the Zoom as quickly as possible. You can't unpost it.
Other?
So. I think before we make any decision, we should talk as a board and go back to our civility policy. And I do know that as public figures, there are different thresholds that we, that we are not protected by from others. And, you know, critique. So what is critiques and what is not civil? I think that those are things that we need to further flush out. But if we just do this without having a larger discussion. I, I think it will have more negative backlash because the fact that we are elected officials, we don't have the same protection as students and as staff.
Yeah, it's a challenging one to discuss at the moment. So I think it would require more thought around it, for sure. I, I tend to be concerned about any type of censorship, as, as you also suggested, Deborah. So. Yeah, it's a, it's a challenging one. And I appreciate, I think everybody understands the situation going on. So I don't think that we must believe on 500%.
Guys, I know you were going to say, thank you, I appreciate that. And. So it's interesting to be in a situation where I used to go into middle schools and high schools and teach children about how to deal with harassment and bullying. And so it's like follow my assertive steps, say what I see, say what I feel, say what I want, and then walk away. So also, I think when it comes to First Amendment rights, when we offer the opportunity and platform for public input. I, I think it's, what we can, we cannot do is pretty, pretty darn narrow there. So I didn't know that we can really take any action on the, the public input itself, once you provide that platform and the parameters. It's kind of a real. I will point out that WASTA, WASSA, and all of our groups across Alabama State have worked along with Superintendent Redfield, State Board of Education. Have worked with our governor, have worked with all of our national groups to put out a message and a call for stability. And mutual respect. And we have just seen this really tested over the past year and a half as a complement of the pandemic for a lot of reasons. I think that it's pretty rare for us to get something like that. Although I, I've sat on board meetings where the public comment got out of control and threatening, where I, I felt almost in danger for my life. And that was just observing the board meeting. And this is here on our side. So I've seen it get pretty crazy. No, I think maybe if we, we find that letter that was sent from the, the leadership groups on the stability, mutual respect that was sent out and maybe put that in with our next agenda meeting and review that and put that with our mutual respect and stability document and just kind of remind the community. And then, and the reminder that that was built over, over a decade ago with community groups, P T As and administration, everything that, that started that whole kind of community-wide agreement of how we treat each other with respect and assume best intent. So I'm not going to say it's okay. I see what's happening. It, it is really hard to be hit by that kind of, to be blindsided by that kind of attack in a place when I'm working in certain like you. And so it leaves me feeling attacked, which nobody in our position should feel that. So I'm just going to ask that that individual and that all of us in the community strive to be kinder, be better. Remember that we are the adults in the room. We're making decisions and the children are watching us. We need to set the tone and the example for our children. Thank you.
That's a great reminder. Thank you, Brian. So I don't think we can actually take any action on this right now, but I am open to looking at the, at the the introductory spiel for future. And thank you for, thank you for bringing it up, Deborah. David, did you have anything to report? I don't have any word, word reports except to say that I have a couple of pack meetings coming up. And next week, the, the E I committee of the P T A advocacy group will be meeting on Monday, although it's not yet. I do, we had a wonderful first meeting, first perspective procedure meeting.
Thank you, everyone. I am looking for a motion to withdraw.
So, second.
All in favor of adjournance, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they nay. No need, no abstentions, that passes by a vote of five to zero. We are adjourned at nine twelve P M. Thank you, everyone.